Okay, we've got the green light. We're ready to go. Welcome to council meeting in Spanish Fork City on May, what are we, the fifteenth? The sixteenth? May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Thanks for joining us, everyone. Welcome to the Spanish Fork City Council. Uh, we'll, uh, we'll start off just like we always do with a prayer and a motivational message. Uh, who's got that tonight? Councilman Argyle has that, then who's leading us in the pledge? Hi, Councilman Carter.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we all grateful this day that we can meet here as leaders of Spanish Fork City. We ask, I spare with us as we conduct the business that we may do so in a pleasing manner. We are grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve. We are grateful for our wonderful city, the citizens that are within this city, and the opportunity that we have to be here and participate in the many things that it is offered. We ask you to have a blessing upon our first responders. Watch over them, keep them safe, help them to keep our city safe and clean. We are grateful for the many blessings thou mustows upon us and we ask these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. The audience, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, takes us to item three C, follow-up to previous comments. Anything? City manager parents?
Yeah, sure. We had a comment last council meeting, uh, two comments actually. One, we're still doing some research on with the CUP and we should hopefully have some meeting, some meetings with them. Uh, maybe a next or, well, a next council meeting with CUP here. So we don't have any answers to the question by Mrs. Borm yet, but hopefully soon. And then there was a comment regarding the state flag and, and we did actually reach out to Lieutenant Governor's office for some, uh, to the Governor's office for some guidance on this, and they said that pretty much you could do anything that you want. And what we had was totally appropriate. Uh, and if we wanted to have the, the, the blue state flag, the historic, if you will, the state flag, and the new state flag or one or the other, we could do anything that we wanted. And, uh, so tonight we have both and certainly we, we can look to you for any kind of direction if you want to do anything different than that or anything more than that. Certainly look to you for some guidance. They said we could do anything pretty much that we wanted though.
I have a quick question on that. So we don't need to implement, or the new flag's not implemented till next March? Is that correct?
Um, Tyler, do you have, or Nick?
Yeah, so the date, the adoption date is in March, that that will be the new state flag. Uh, but when I spoke with the Governor's Office, they said it's popping up all over the place. So it's the state flag and we officially adopted in March.
I think by popping up all over the place also, it's all over the Capitol Building and the like. It's there.
And then at that time, will we keep the old state flag up?
Whatever you want.
Whatever we want.
This is your room.
Okay.
But not just you, but like.
Whatever I want. I'll think about it and get back to you. Just kidding.
Thank you. And I'm just reading, uh, the item C is follow-up to precious comments. Either the comments are previous and probably precious, right? But it's probably a typo. It's probably previous comments. Perfect. That takes us to agenda item four, public comments. This is the opportunity for the public to address the mayor and council. Anything maybe that's not later on the agenda in a public hearing, but please come address the mayor and council with anything that you'd like. Try to keep it to, to three minutes if you can, so we can keep the meeting moving along, but please come up.
This stand right here, Matt Barber, by the way, is not appropriate for us vertically challenged. You guys see me all right?
We can hear you. Great.
Okay, great. That's all I need. I wanted to come tonight. I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting when you guys invited the past elected official to come. And, um, it was neat to see some of those old faces and, um, people we've looked up to and respected for a lot of years in the community. And those of us who've lived there forever know what kind of decisions they made that were really tough when there wasn't any money. And, uh, really the stuff we have now is attributed to a lot to them. So, um, I wanted to add my voice to congratulate the city on the new facility. It's amazing. Um, and all the good things that are going on in town. But as, even as we drive by and see all these great buildings and the things going on, I think we'll all agree that, what makes Spanish Fork great was the thousands of people to show up, sandbag and to plant flowers and how it doesn't matter what it, what it is, people show up. And that's why we live here. It's just a great place to live. Um, speaking of history, I want to make my plug for keeping the building next door. I know there's been some discussion about that and the expense that it's going to be to maintain it and to get it to a place that, uh, the city can afford to take the risk on that. But I think the city has money and I'm putting in my vote to make sure we try and keep that building the way it is. I mean, after all, it is the logo, so I don't know how, how you can take it down. But again, I just wanted to add my comments to the other elected officials that were here. Congratulate you on the building.
Thanks, Councilman Barber. It was a good day. A lot of, a lot of fine folks from years past. Thank you.
Kathleen Levitt. Um, so I actually wanted to just extend my gratitude to you. So the issue that I was going to bring before you this afternoon or evening, I found out you had already placed a call to help with that. So I just, I was kind of blown away by that. I'm in admiration for your dedication to your residents here. Um, and I think people should know how much you care. So thank you so much for helping to get involved with that. And I think we saved this resident from homelessness for the time being, so that is huge. Thank you so much on her behalf and mine.
Thanks, Kathleen. Anyone else? Kind of reverberates in the room when you say anyone else. Okay, thank you. Uh, that'll take us to our, our next item here. Uh, item, uh, six A, Spanish Fork one oh one, the summer reading program.
Probably should have council comments first.
Yeah, we're gonna do council comments. Sorry. Yep, there's our library director in the back there. Can you hold off just a minute or you wanna go over?
Hold off.
Okay, all right. We'll do council comments. That's why Councilman Argyle sits next to me in this new place. So he can let me know how to follow an agenda. We'll, uh, we'll start with Shane on this end, Councilman Marshall. And, uh, we'll go down this way, so you have some time to prepare, Councilman Carter.
Thanks. I was hoping you'd start.
Yeah, I know you were.
I don't have any comments tonight. Short and simple.
Okay, perfect. How are we gonna make it to seven if you're not giving any comments?
I don't think I have anything either. I mean, I could make things up, but I think it'd be really cool to get done earlier than normal.
Wow, okay. They're, they're, they're giving their time to this side of the dais. Councilman Argyle?
So I haven't had time to re- prepare. To, I think Kathleen will probably mention this. Just want a quick thanks to the Rotary and the Chamber Golf Tournament that they had. Had a great turnout. Grateful for the sponsors. It takes a lot of money to put on a golf course or put on a golf game. And, uh, I think we had a real good turnout and had a good, it was a beautiful day. Also would like to just mention Memorial Day coming up on Thursday, the twenty-fifth. The veterans will be setting up our Flanders Fields with the crosses and the flags. And, uh, they always have such a great response to help do that, uh, in, in preparation for Memorial Day. And then they'll also have the cleanup on Tuesday, the thirtieth at three P M. Both of them at three P M. One on Thursday to get, set them up. And then Monday will be the memorial meeting and at ten thirty at the cemetery. And, uh, they're preparing for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Argyle. Councilman Euler.
Just a couple of things. I'll be quick as well. Wanted to report on a couple of meetings I attended. Uh, Mount Niebo Water Agency, we had a meeting a week ago where we set a public hearing for June twelfth to approve the upcoming budget for the next year. And then South Utah Valley Animal Shelter, our last meeting, we held a public hearing and we approved the budget for the coming year. Then I just wanted to remind residents as well of the health fair that we've got this coming Saturday. Think ten o'clock. What time does the run, anybody know what time the run starts? Is it also at ten?
Nine.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty is the run? Mile, mile and a half?
Approximately a mile.
Expect to see you there, Dale? Running?
I will be there. Not running.
Not running. So great event that we hold each year at Sports Park. So if you're able to make it to that, we'd love to see you. That's all I have there.
Thanks. Councilman Euler, Councilman Carter. All right. Well, first I'll invite Kathleen to come talk about the chamber for a minute.
All right, Nick, you have to show, you have to teach me how to use my power. Maybe put together a slideshow for you, so. And actually, it looks better. Okay. Perfect. So we played some catch-up this month to be able to celebrate our business of the month. Um, so this is our March Business of the Month, Venue Sports. Um, it's a little sports car, it's courts, sports card and memorabilia shop, um, on Expressway Parkway. It's a really cool shop if you guys haven't been there. It's pretty much anything you can think of that's sports, you'll find at Venue Sports. So go check it out. Phil is the nicest person on the planet. Um, so that's just a little bit from his shop there. And then here's a few photos from the golf tournament that we, the Chamber did in conjunction with the Rotary Club. We did have beautiful weather and Mr. Mayor Mike Mendenhall sponsored a hole this year instead of playing, which was fun. I feel like we got to interact with you even more. So that was a beautiful day. So thank you for your patronship. And, um, let's see. Then we celebrated our community partner of the quarter, which was the Spanish Fork Parks and Recreation. That was a really fun day as well to kind of get to know everybody in that department. We work with them really closely to be able to coordinate our events through the city facilities and things like that, um, and the events that we do. But it was really great to kind of meet everybody. Some of them I only ever talked to on the phone. So that was a super great opportunity to be able to celebrate them and introduce the Chamber Board to, um, a lot of the city staff. So that was super fun. I went to a, um, Emotional Prosperity Summit. So this, I just was, actually the only photo I took from the day because it was funny. But the Prosperity Summit was about teaching how to retain employment through alternative means besides just financial. So if somebody, you know, if you bring people on for money, then they will leave for money. So, um, a big thing that we're trying to solve right now is how to retain quality employment without having to break the small business budget. So this was some really good feedback that I received from that, that we will then educate our businesses here in Spanish Fork on. So just a few things we've been up to and I think that summed it up. Uh, we have Business of the Month for May is Griffel's Biomatch. We'll be, um, celebrating them tomorrow at noon. And then we have our Noon Networking Luncheon on Thursday at the Hampton Inn at noon as well. So thanks so much for the time.
Kathleen.
All right, just a few things for me. This, um, week, or I guess in the last two weeks since we've been together, I had an airport board meeting. Um, airport is thr- airport is thriving. A lot of things going on over there. Um, we'll talk about, or we have one of those things in our, um, consents today about the runway construction that's gonna be happening. There's a lot of planning that has to go around that and a lot of things that have to change with that. Um, we also had, um, the, an art council board meeting. Um, they have a lot of things going on over at the Arts Council. Um, Nick has a couple of pictures I would, I'm gonna have him share real quick. Um, the first one, um, there is, the Chorale has a performance this Friday and they'll be playing or singing wonderful hits from the musical Hairspray. So I know that Chad, I think that's right up your alley, right? Um, so that's at seven P M. At the Spanish Fork High School. That is free. Um, and it's, um, it'll be a good event. A lot of people put a lot of time into making sure that that, that happens. And, um, so go check that out. And then also we have the Youth Arts Festival is still going. Lots of classes are still available. We didn't fill it that night that we were here at last council meeting until we were here until about midnight. But, um, it was kind of, they have a really unique experience. Um, there's some programs in the city that when they open at midnight, they have a lot of people ready to sign up. And that was one of those where there was a lot of people ready to, uh, sign up at that time. But a lot of things going on with youth arts and the arts in the city and a lot of fun stuff. So, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, thank you for attending all, all your meetings, council. Couple of things that I have, Kathleen saw, you saw the Chamber Rotary Golf Tournament pictures there. That's always a good thing. Thank you to the Chamber. Thank you to the Rotary Club putting that on. Thank you to all the participants to come out and raise a, a bunch of money for, for scholarships for kids. It's a good thing. I did learn quickly trying to pop popcorn on golf courses. There's a few things that go along with that. Mainly power. Takes a lot to heat up one of those things. So thankfully Bill Summers from Macy's was in the first group. And I'm like, well, no, there's gonna be no popcorn. And he says, well, get your wife down to Macy's and pick up a few, few things. So if you thought you were eating fresh pop, well, it was fresh. It was just from Macy's fresh. It wasn't pop there. So we, we improvised and, and thank you, uh, thank you to Bill, thank you to everybody, uh, that, that came through there. It was fun to see everybody. And, and business is, is strong in Spanish Fork and, and so is the volunteer clubs like the Rotary and the Chamber. Next, uh, I want to bring up, uh, I guess we don't have to bring him up. I guess he's got a microphone in front of him now, or you can come up, Dale. But, uh, Parks and Rec Director Dale Robinson is gonna speak a little bit more of, of what, uh, what Mr. Euler, uh, where's your help there, Dale? Yeah, she's watching. Mr. Euler touched on the, uh, the Fit City Fair, uh, Active and Healthy Fair that's now in its, uh, I can't remember year. What did you say year? Did you say year? I don't know what year.
This is the seventh year.
Seventh year.
Two thousand seventeen was our first year.
Awesome.
So this is our seventh year with the Wellness Fair. First of all, Mayor Mendenhall really didn't play golf?
Oh, I mean, he was putting the whole time, but.
This is, that's amazing. That is, that is a huge sacrifice.
I have my club there.
Thank you, sir.
I, I offered that they could take a drive of mine off nine, so I hit a different color ball. And I won't tell you how many, how many teams took my drive. It wa- it wasn't, it wasn't very good.
Oh, that's awesome. Um, yeah, so we encourage all of our citizens to come join us at the Health and Wellness Fair. The race does start at eight thirty. The Health and Wellness Fair itself will start at nine. It'll go from nine to eleven. We have over forty-five vendors, uh, signed up, which are great resources for our community in, in a wide variety of health and, health and wellness, uh, for physical and mental health and all different kinds of things. So it's a great, great resource for our citizens. Uh, we also have a lot of games and activities. Uh, we have some awesome prizes that we'll be drawing for and snacks and, and things that you can enjoy. So, uh, I encourage you to come down. This is a little risky, I know. I expect all of, all of you sitting up there to be in attendance on Saturday. So I'm gonna hand out a shirt ahead of time. I know Seth will be there because he will run. Right? I'm looking for a commitment here is all I'm really looking for. Is that all? I can tell I'm not gonna get one.
He'll be out checking the river on the river trail anyway, so he'll just run.
Thank you. And I do have assignments for all of you, just so you know, when you show up, you will have something to do. Uh, this year, our ladder climber's gonna be Shane.
Do we trust him on a ladder? Shane?
I didn't, I'm in.
Okay, you okay?
I don't know what that means.
Well, it means you're gonna climb up really high on a ladder. Are you okay with heights? Okay.
Do I get to come down?
You do get to come down.
I guess so.
And then you have to be careful about what you throw out for the kids.
Oh, I watch Gordon.
So you don't hurt them. So, uh, wanna make sure we got a, a public commitment from you to, to do that for us.
Don't put me on the spot.
Gordo was our last one.
I know.
We're replacing him.
People are gonna come just for that event.
I'm sure. See, you gotta do tile all day, so I'm, I'm in.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun, so. Thank you. That's all I have unless you have any questions about the event. Well, that is, that is your new Fit City shirt. You might wanna hold that up, Mayor, for the cameras to see.
This is the Fit City shirt, so if you come.
Let me do, yeah, the one thing I forgot is the first four hundred people to come to the run will get a T-shirt. Okay? It is a family run. We have lots of families come. That's what this event's all about. Uh, it's not a, it's not a strenuous one, unless you're me, but bring your kids and come and enjoy the run around the park is really what you're gonna have. So, uh, first four hundred will get free T-shirts.
Or walk.
Or walk. You can walk too. That's okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Dale. Thanks Parks and Rec for, for keeping this going. If, uh, the history of this, we're getting far enough away from it now where we kind of need to remind ourselves that, uh, started with a grant, uh, from Interaround Healthcare through the Utah League of Cities and Towns. We were one of four cities that were chosen to, to receive that grant. And that was because we're known to, to try to put the health and safety of our residents, uh, in, in, in top of mind in Spanish Fork. And so that kickstarted this campaign and we've committed to keep it going, uh, which always isn't a, isn't an easy thing for a Parks and Rec Department that's got a whole bunch of stuff to do and, and leading up to Fiesta Days, it's even busier for them. But, but I'm, I'm thankful that, uh, that it is going. It's a, the booths that you'll see there are businesses that, uh, that range from everything from, hey, let's, let's check your blood pressure to, hey, let's set up on a point to talk about your mental health and, and everything in between. And so that's really the, the spirit behind this, this fair, uh, the Fit City movement, if you will, is to provide resources to our residents, uh, to, to recreate together and improve your, our mental and, and physical health. And so that's what you'll find if it's the first time coming down there. I think you'll be a, a, a return participant because it's a great, uh, family day and, and some cool prizes to win too. You don't have to do anything besides grab a ticket and, and win a prize. People sometimes walk away with kayaks bigger than what they can carry and stuff like that. Probably not doing kayaks this year for the.
I don't know.
We don't encourage that. It's too soon. Yep, so. Anyway, please join us all Saturday. We'd, we'd love to see you down there at the park, Dale. When we build the rec center there, we're, we're still gonna do this. Just move it somewhere else, I guess, or have we thought that far?
Not used to this new system. Uh, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll find, we'll, we'll probably just move it over to another open field. We're not consuming all of the fields, so.
Mayor, if I may, uh, this is, event is getting bigger and bigger. This is a Yahoo Finance article, so national attention about our, uh, Health and Wellness Fair and Know Me Health will be there providing naloxone. So thought this was pretty cool when it came across my alerts this week.
Awesome. Thank you for pointing that out, Nick. Yeah, this, you're, you're gonna find the businesses there are, are really second to none. And the resources they're providing you for free for you and your family. I mean, not to mention some snow cones and some swag and that are given away and everything. But they really are the best in, in, in the business of health and, and they're on stat, they're on, they're on site for you for half a day to talk to you, uh, and, and set up appointments in time, so.
Will Jazzercise be there? Are they coming again?
I think there's, they're.
That's like the coolest, they're the coolest act.
Yeah, they're, they're usually there every year. They're one of our mainstays, so I'm, I'm pretty sure they'll be there.
Yeah, I hope. They're always fun.
Good music.
It's always an annual reminder for me that I have no soul, none whatsoever.
Well, you could take that in so many different ways.
It is like, just give me that shuffle. That's all I got.
You have soul, you just have no moves. So if you wanna come see some.
Okay, I also sent, uh, and, and I touched on this, but Dale, your Parks and Rec Department, uh, transitioning from, from, uh, from a long forever winter, it seems like that we were in, now to the spring and summer in, uh, in Spanish Fork.
from a long forever winter, it seems like that we were in, now to the spring and summer in, uh, in Spanish Fork. Uh, this is what's happening. You're, sorry, this is just what you get now that T-ball season's here, but there's little Jagger ready for his game today. Starts in an hour and a half, so you'll get, uh, bi-weekly updates twice a month on how the Phillies are doing in T-ball. I don't know if, uh, we're not keeping score of T-ball games, but somebody is in their head, you know, Jagger probably is, so. Anyway, Jagger's ready to go. He's so ready to go that, uh, I, when I woke up this morning, he somehow made it into our bed and he slept in that. And I think we're at the school today. So, anyway, I know Nick, your six-year-old too is, is T-balling it up tonight?
Yeah, first, uh, first pitch is in a minute.
What's the T, what's the team name?
He's the Nationals.
I hope the Phillies just route the Nationals when they arrive.
I hope they meet. There's like thirty teams.
Yeah, there is a lot of teams.
Yep.
Mayor, is it true that you're the coach of his team as well?
Yes, uh, Coach Fowles is filling in tonight. Yeah, his boy Will, Will the Thrill, uh, is, uh, on the team, so Coach Fowles is filling in tonight.
And you have a busy schedule. It's, it's kind of what I've gathered from knowing you. So people out there that say they're busy, I'd like to see anyone busier than our mayor and he's still out coaching these little tykes.
When, when you have, uh, a Mustang League state championship under your belt as a coach, you can't.
You just keep going, okay? Good for you, Mayor.
You gotta keep going. It's half coaching Shane.
I'm gonna not talk.
No, thank you, uh, in all seriousness, our Parks and Rec Department, uh, how, how huge is it that, um, it's been said before, but you create the space, uh, and the program for, uh, for little dudes and, and, and little girls to, to, to do their thing. And it's just fun. It's, it could be, uh, best part of life to, to, to be involved in that. So, thank you citizens. Thanks for living here. Thanks for, for, for paying your taxes, paying your fees that make all this, all this stuff possible 'cause it makes, it makes Spanish Fork what we are. Um, okay, the last thing, uh, is, uh, that I have is our, our water update with, uh, our city manager Seth Perrins. Um, you'll notice it, it's been in the news. You've seen it, um, you've seen it on our, on our, uh, channels out to the public as well, but, uh, we've all repeated up here during this, this river event that we're trying to, to still keep inside the river channel, that you don't need sandbags on the east side of town. And then we needed sandbags on the east side of town for a bit, uh, with a, with a water event up there. Um, tough stuff, but, uh, but, uh, we're, we're still in the middle of, um, we hope more than, further along than the middle of this event, but these are some good details to always, always remember. Um, especially as my main concern is I've expressed this to, to Seth and the other directors and the teams that are working, uh, in and around the river all the time right now, uh, have been that you're about to, we're about to transition from being out of school. Your kids aren't gonna have school to go to every day. They're, they're gonna go find something else to do. Please, 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 uh, that, that, that something else can't be by the river, uh, for a little while still. We've had issues already that, uh, we really do want to avoid. It, it, it is super dangerous, as you're gonna see by some of these images here, uh, that, that an adult would have a really, really tough time getting out and, and a child, uh, would, would nearly be impossible. So if we can all help each other, especially this time as we transition, um, just, just drill it into them, not, not by the river. Go, go somewhere else while you're, while you're going into summer here. So with that warning, manage your parents.
I feel like I have what, twenty-nine minutes? Is that my, my timeline? Okay. Get us to seven oh one. So this is, uh, uh, let me just start with this page here that Nick has up and we're gonna try to have some fun with Nick, keep him on his toes. This is our Spanishfork.org flood page, river page, and there is a lot of good information. So if anybody in the audience, anybody watching at home is wondering where we're hiding all of this good stuff, we're hiding it on the city's flood page that you can access on that big red banner at the top of our webpage, top left corner that says flood information. Scroll down and, and we're gonna look at, uh, a couple of graphs and charts and then some, some cameras. So in just a moment, we're gonna look at the snowpack and the current flow. But I wanted to show you something that we've been tracking and, and watching probably since, I wanna say about April first, we installed cameras out on about a number of bridges, but we've made it so those images, uh, cameras that we have, some cameras take a picture every fifteen minutes, some every thirty minutes and some every ha, every hour. So if you click on River Cams, um, it'll show you the latest picture from that particular location. And they run from the, up the east end of town to the west end of town and, and, uh, so the golf course, Poplar Lane, Main Street Bridges, and then a little bit further down, the West Park Drive. And, and that is a little askew, so you can turn your head sideways and look at that one. Leland Bridge and then the I, I fifteen bridge. And if you click on any of them, so let's click, click on the Leland Bridge for a second. We can see that this picture was taken at eighteen twenty-nine hours or six twenty-nine, so five minutes ago. Um, and, and we can see the river flow. You can even zoom in a little bit on it, I think. Nick can do that. Yep. So we can see that the water's kinda hitting the top there in that far corner, which has been common for the last couple of days. So this is a resource that's available to the public and, and we wanna make you aware of that. So let's jump over to the, the presentation and, and we'll kinda click through a number of the, um, I do. Um, we'll click through a number of these. This is an image that we've looked at for, uh, many of our last council meetings, and I'm actually gonna dissect this image a little bit. This is a, an image that shows the snowpack for the two, uh, snowtell sites, the two measuring, uh, sites that we track in our basin. If you look at this, you would say, we still have a lot of snow to go, and that is correct. There are a total of ten water inches, but I wanna break it down for you by, uh, mid-level snow and high-level snow. So by looking here, you can see this is a, a measuring station that's at about seventy-seven hundred feet. And the red arrow tells you it's all gone, which is good news. The, the moderate temperatures that we've had in the seventies and, and low eighties and, and even some sixties have been melting the snow in the mid, mid-level for the last month. That is excellent news. Uh, we still have a lot of snow in the upper level, so this one you can see is in the nine, almost nine thousand foot range. The good news about this is you really have a lot of problem with flooding when you have mid-level snow that melts and you get some warmth that brings the higher level too, and you get those two elevations coming down together. It's not really sci, that's not great science. It's just volume, right? And, and so what this tells us, if we look at this one, is we've lost all of the low-level snow. And there, frankly, there's more low-level snow because there's more low-level. There isn't quite as much acreage up there that has the high level. So that's great news. Um, we think that we're probably hitting the peak this week. So we'll, we'll see the, the peak of the flow, uh, maybe last night, maybe, maybe sometime this week or Saturday. Uh, we'll know certainly as, as the next few days roll on. But, uh, that's great news. So we don't have any mid-level snow to bring off. So we'll keep our eye on, on this now and, and watch how quickly it comes down. Before I jump off of those, any questions? I, I don't know, have I broken those out here? Did you break those out last time?
Somewhere. Where else?
On the YouTube.
Oh, I did, yeah, I did it on YouTube.
Can you try and get the forty minutes?
No, I'll be fast. I won't, I won't get to the forty. So this is the, this is the graph of, of water flow in our river. And I refer to this as the river tide, last council meeting. And somebody asked me the next day, what effect does the moon actually have on the river? How is that possible? And I had to explain, that's just what we call it. So when I use the term river tide, it is not an actual tide. The moon doesn't pull the river and, and, and affect the river. That's just what we call it because it's really cyclical, as you can see by the ups and downs. And you can really count on hitting that peak at about two, two in the morning and hitting the trough about two in the afternoon. So this is, uh, this is about the end of May, sorry, end of April, when we hit this peak at right around two thousand CFS. I wanna say that was actually May first, May second. And then this week on Sunday, Mother's Day, you saw, you can see that, that, that kinda river tide disappeared. And we had this really weird growth in the water. This wasn't growth, but this increase in the water. And that was because of rain. And if you remember on Mother's Day in the mountains, there were just some beautiful thunder clouds out there, which to the world may look awesome. But to you, if you're watching the river that has already eighteen, sixteen, eighteen hundred CFS of water, it makes you really nervous. So a lot of us were watching the river, uh, watching the growth in the, the, the water flow. And sure enough, about four in the morning on Monday morning is we, we peaked out at, at our peak. I think it was twenty-three hundred or just under twenty-three hundred CFS. We had that last night as well. So two weeks in a row on Tuesday night right before council meeting, we have peak flows. So that's, that's a trend. Um, we have some bets, internal bets on when things are gonna peak and, and, uh, nobody knows exactly when, but we think sometime between now and Sa- Saturday, we'll see the peak of our event. And probably then we'll still have high water flow for the next, next two or three weeks at least. Certainly by, I, we think until mid-June, we'll have water above a thousand CFS. And then it'll start to come down by the end of June and be probably normal in, in July. A good rule of thumb, as long as the water is really, really brown, kind of a chocolatey color, stay out of it. It's not, it's gonna be more, it's gonna have a current greater than what you're probably used to, uh, probably taller than you probably used to, deeper, I guess I should say. So, so stay out of it. And that's a real, a bummer for many people that enjoy that, that water. But one thing that I say to people, and I think it's helpful to know, remember yesterday it was ice, so it's not very warm. And if you're in it and you get in submerged in that water, you're gonna be in it. And, and you only have a few minutes before your body temperature starts to suffer, and that has an impact on your abilities to move around. This is a graph, just a little closer, I think that shows the peak, twenty-three, twenty-two ninety. All right, uh, I wanna show this is an image and just maybe hit it. Will it repeat? Yeah, just keep looping it. Um, this is an image of Leland Bridge at the high flow and at the pallet factory. And you can see that it, um, this is, I think, what you're talking about, Mayor. I don't know who's gonna kayak through that. So don't, right? You will be a bridge pancake. Uh, you're not going around it. You're not going under it. Um, you can see the water's having a hard time going under it. So please, please, please stay out of the water. Right Eddie? Yeah. That is about as much water as that bridge can handle. You can see the, the capacity is, is met. I don't think I can laser point over there yet. That's, I think there's a two inches of capacity right there. This is a picture of some sandbags in a location and wanted to show you how the sandbags are working. If there's audio on this, mute it. Nobody wants to hear it. Yeah, nobody wants to hear that. Good, thanks. So you can see this river's on the right-hand side and, and I think eventually the picture will pan such that you can see the left-hand side. And there's water on the riverside and there's no water on the uphill side, and that's great. The sandbags are doing exactly what we want. And, and I think we have four locations where we have water touching sandbags. And on one hand, I'm like, yes, we can see how they did. And on the other hand, uh, I, I think it'd be great if we never touched the sandbags. Uh, but, but you, we can see that they're working well and we have a lot of sandbags deployed and, and I'm hopeful that we won't get to most of them. Uh, but for the areas that are lower lying and you can see the sandbags are working. And then, oh, here's another location. This is right just west of Main Street, keeping water off of that trail so that the, the, the walkover, if you're on the trail on the east side of Main Street and you wanna come to the trail on the west side. If we didn't put these sandbags here, this water would've completely washed over that sidewalk and you'd be walking through mud and maybe push you out further, you know, having to wrap around even more. So uphill side is, is dry and, and, uh, sandbags are doing exactly what we wanted them to do there. And then, yeah, this is, you can access that graph on our city's website. That just is a forecast of how hydrologists think we're gonna look. I feel like there was one other image. Oh. Okay, I think that's it. Any questions for me that you have, Mayor?
Yes.
Please.
What time were those taken?
What?
Like three AM?
The videos?
Did you just set your alarm?
Somewhere around there. Yeah, there are alarms, yeah.
You're very dedicated.
Well, somebody took them, yeah. So, we have, I think, Sunday night Dale, Tuesday night, I guess Sunday night and Monday night. We had a num, we had probably twelve individuals out two or three times throughout the night checking on their sections of the river. We've divided the river up into a mile, sorry, half mile, a quarter miles, three-quarter mile sections. And they'll go out and, and they'll check on their section and look for areas where they think there could be issues, see if there's any debris hung up. They're really, at this point, as the river was getting to a peak, how's the river performing at twenty-three hundred CFS? How are the banks performing? But then they're really, we're really focused now on erosion and, and how, how are the banks holding up with this high flow? So, that's one thing.
I think so.
Yep. Any other questions for Seth, went to the river? The data, again, like, uh, like you mentioned, is all, all public. You can, you can find it on the website there, but please, as, and I know that the trails are just gonna get used that much, that much, uh, heavier as, as we go into, to spring and summer here. And, and, uh, again, it's just gonna be about a month until it's, it's really safe enough to get in there. Even if you think, ah, I got a life jacket, I'm gonna be okay. Um, I promise. Our, our, our paramedics, our, our rescue teams, every, everyone else, would, just a week ago, was looking for people that they couldn't find in the river and, and they had a tough time getting out. So, so please, uh, stay away. It's, it's one of the most dangerous things uh, we, we can, you know, that we have in our city right now. I wanna also recognize the west side of the freeway. Seth showed you the, the Leland Bridge. After that, there's a bridge that goes under the, the freeway and gets out to the fields. Uh, you know, there's, there's water out there. You're seeing it in fields out there. Those are, although not, not residents of proper inside Spanish Fork city limits, uh, we sure are, uh, thinking about and trying to, to help. Their, their, their address says Spanish Fork on their mail. And, uh, they, they come in here and, and, uh, and participate in, in everything we do in Spanish Fork as well. So we're thinking about them and, and, uh, and, and the help they're getting from the county is, is greatly appreciated and, and we're, we've been there to, to try and help too. But we are thinking about them because it's a while till it gets out to the lake out, out there. So, um, uh, before we carry on to the next, uh, the next agenda item, our PGA professional of the golf course is here to speak to us. Uh, I, I don't know what he's gonna speak about. It's a wild card. It could be, could be Mike, you're banned from the golf course for a while or something. I hope that's not the way, Ryan. But this is our professional, Ryan Reese of the golf course.
Thank you. I appreciate just one minute. I, sorry to interrupt your meeting. I meant to be here for the public comment stage and I guess I missed it. But I am a resident of Spanish Fork and I'm also the golf pro, the golf course. Um, on behalf of the golf course and our staff and myself, I, I just, I had to come down and I, I just have to thank everybody from the city who has put in so much time in, in sandbagging and helping protect the golf course and all of the city employees from all the different departments. And it's just been blown away by, by all the time and effort everybody's put in from our city to, to protect the golf course. And that's it. I just wanna say thank you to everybody. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. I can't say better than that. The, the, the success of, of this effort has been the volunteers, has, has been, uh, us, you as citizens, helping, uh, complete strangers, maybe haven't played golf. There's a lot of people that that was maybe their first time on the golf course was, was piling up sandbags down there for, for a few days. And so awesome to see. And, uh, and from every department that's now been repurposed as river professionals, uh, that didn't sign up for it. My gosh, it's, it's just amazing. Uh, above and beyond of, of your job descriptions and what's been done. That's been the success, uh, so far in the river and we hope it continues for another few weeks. But I would say it's already been a success in that front.
We have some employees that are not going to give up their title. They, those that own the river are river captains. Those that they report to, so they're, I think there are six that report to one individual. Of course, they're like, well, we're river admirals. And then somebody else said, well, if, if they're river admirals, then Dwight Eisenhower was the supreme commander of the allied forces in whatever, right? They're like, so I'm the supreme commander. Like, guys, stop it. We're getting a little carried away with this power here.
It sounded like you were.
That was not me. That was not me at all. It stops a river captain.
Okay, Your Honor.
That's Dale. Dale gave him the title of river captain, which I thought was fantastic.
If there's shirts and hats made, uh, we want, uh, the council included.
You wanna be on the raft?
Admiral or something, yeah, something like that.
Come on, you guys wanna be on the raft?
Yeah, vice, yeah, yeah, raft is fine. We'll have that.
Remember that name, Raft, the River Anti-Flood Team.
Yeah.
We're nailed. We're, we're doing a great job. We're nailed, we're, we're doing a great job.
Watch for the merch coming soon. Okay, uh, alright, we'll get on with the, the rest of, uh, our agenda here. Uh, item number six, uh, now, Spanish Fork 101. The director that's in this beautiful building every day since it opened, Mr. Scott Aylott.
Yeah, don't you love this building?
Beautiful.
Every day I just love it even more and love speaking with the patrons that come in the first time or the hundred and first time in here, but they like or don't like about it, so. Uh, and what's interesting is that we're on, on track to have a record-breaking month and typically May is a little bit slow for us at the library 'cause kids are finishing up school and it's busy in the sense of people bringing books back, but they don't typically check out a whole lot during the month of May. And we're on track to have our busiest May on record. So, uh, we still are seeing just this significant growth, um, here at the library, which is awesome. And part of that is our summer reading program, right? And that's when we really hit our peak, every single year is the month of June. In fact, the day after Memorial Day every year is our busiest day. And so we're expecting another grand opening type day on, what is that, May thirtieth this year? Um, so for the summer reading program, we do it every single year and we'll talk a little bit about it this evening. We already have six hundred kids signed up for the summer reading program. I think last year we had about two thousand kids participate and we haven't even had school in yet. So we're really anticipating a lot of participants this year. So the purpose and the goal of the summer reading program is to help minimize the summer slide. And we're not talking about the awesome slides up at the All Buildings Park or any of our other great parks here in the city. But we're talking about the summer slide, which is that studies show that kids that don't actively read throughout the summer, you lose about one month of academic progress that they made during that previous academic year. So then when they get back to school in the fall, that first month is spent relearning and catching up on the stuff that they learned the previous year. But kids that read throughout the summer slide less. And so that's why we really try and encourage kids to continue to read throughout the summer, is to help minimize that slide. And also as parents, right, if we read, it sets a good example for the kids and they're more motivated to read throughout the summer. So every year we do the summer reading program, it's for all ages and... There we go. So this year's theme, we'll kinda back up, is all together now. And now how appropriate, right, that we now have this wonderful building where we're encouraging the public to be all together and come together and be together at the library. And this year's theme is all together. So we have a lot of fun programs and activities centered around this theme. Uh, every year we get a lot of great prizes, um, for community members to participate. The goal this year for children is to read six hundred minutes, which is ten minutes a day. It's not a lot. And that's for kids zero up through teenagers, right? For adults, the goal is to read or listen to five books. So if you're not the type to pick up a physical book, but you wanna bust out our Libby app and listen to an audiobook, listen to five over the summer and you'll be eligible for your completion prize. We get a lot of awesome businesses throughout the community that donate to the summer reading program. This is a list of businesses that donated last year to our grand prize drawings that we do. Um, so we get a lot of awesome participation from the community to help encourage and support and promote reading during the summer runs. So how do you sign up? Well, obviously you can sign up by coming into the library. We love that, 'cause then we get you in the door and you check out thirty books before you leave. So we love that approach. But you can also sign up online if you go to spanishfork.org/library. You can sign up there or if you go to spanishfork.beenstack.com. That's the app that we use where you can log your reading. And as a parent, I love it because I read to my boys every single night and then I go into the app and I list how many minutes we read and it goes right towards any of the current reading programs we have going on at the library. The summer reading program this year, we're gonna cut it a little bit short, it's gonna end at the, end of July. Um, we typically see participation wane once August hits because people are getting into back-to-school mode. Um, at the end of the summer, we always have our end-of-summer party, which we typically do over at the city park. Now we'll do it in this building. And we're gonna run on that theme of all together now. And starting this year, that end-of-summer party won't be exclusively for the kids, but it will be for, for all ages. So we'll have activities for teens and for adults that participate and complete the summer reading program this year. Um, in terms of Beanstack, you can also download the app, I failed to mention that, but, um, it's also an easy and convenient approach. I think, there we go. Uh, to help support and kinda promote the summer reading program and tie it into that theme, obviously we love programs at the library. We love our consistent and, and reliable storytimes that we do, um, all year round. Uh, this summer, we're gonna be doing some fun new programs. One that will be a lot of fun is on Monday, or excuse me, Wednesday, May thirty-first, we're doing an all-together-now coloring exhibit in the Heritage Room. So we'll have a bunch of blank canvases up, um, of different images and you can come in and you color your portion. And then the next person comes in and colors their portion, kinda like what they've done at the Harvest Moon Hall in the past. So you'll be able to come in as a family and paint your, or color your portion of the images and we'll have a bunch in there. And then as a community, we're painting or coloring a bunch of art together. We have a lot of other storytimes, we have a new Spanish storytime, bilingual storytime that we're doing. Uh, a list of all of our programs is available on our website, spanishfork.org/library. Uh, one thing that's been really popular that we're kicking off this year with the summer reading program, for those of you that have young kids or have had young kids, Pokemon trading cards are super popular. So we've started, I wish we could take credit for, we stole from another library, but we're starting our own trading card game and it's dragon-themed and kids are going crazy for it. So last week, we did a, a showing of Rea and the Dragon, or the Last Dragon, and we had a hundred people show up on Saturday to watch the movie and get their special Rea dragon card. So for kids that participate in the summer reading program, they'll be able to get their starter deck for, uh, the dragon card game. And so throughout the summers, they participate in programs, they'll get additional cards. And then starting in the fall, we'll have activities where they can come play the card game with one another, trade their cards, those types of things. So as a parent, I love it because now I don't have to spend money on Pokemon cards. Uh, but also it encourages participation in the library, coming together and participating in some of these fun activities together. That may be in the last slide, I think it is. Any questions from the council or, or the mayor about summer reading or anything else going on at the library? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Numbers are still up, people, people coming, we're tracking people on a monthly basis, weekly basis, or what?
Yeah, both, all of the above. Yep, all the numbers are up and, uh, like I mentioned at the beginning, we anticipate that May will be a record-breaking month. And we just, every day, keep think, you know, keep thinking, if we're this busy and May is typically slow, what is June gonna be like? So we're anxious and excited for what next month will hold for us, so, thank you.
I'm watching all the books walk out of the building as people leave, the bags and bags of books. And I'm, I wonder, are there any left? I mean, the number of people that walk out with books, it's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's incredible. Right now, one of our busiest collections and most checked-out collections is among our board, our picture books. And in our picture books, we have categories, right? Princesses, dragons, dinosaurs, et cetera. And of those categories, over ninety percent of those books are checked out. So you go to that section and there's like two bear books. And, uh, interestingly enough, the rest of the picture books are about forty-five percent checked out. So what we learn from that is if you put a, a book in a category and put it in a bin, kinda like the old record store where you can see the cover, it checks out twice as much than if it's on a shelf with the spine facing out 'cause the kids gravitate to being able to see what's on the cover. So ninety percent of those categories are checked out versus forty-five percent of just your general picture books. It's crazy, we love it, it's, it's so exciting and fun time to be here at the library. So, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, takes us to item B, Tara Silver, our reporter, will give us, uh, two thousand twenty-three election dates and deadlines.
Today I get to, uh, come before you and do, uh, election officer part of my positions. It's been kinda nice to sit in the back and have a whole new perspective. You guys should try it sometime. So elections for cities across the state are nonpartisan. And what that means is that, um, no one is affiliated with a political party. And the reason why they do that is because they figure on the local level, if you're elected, you should be for the, for the whole city. And so, um, just know going into elections this year that they're nonpartisan as a city election. Um, our next thing is that we have contracted with the county, Utah County, um, to administer our elections. And that is they count the votes, they take the ballots. And the reason why we do that is because, um, with the new security measures that are required by the state, the Utah County has those resources and, um, those types of things. Whereas if we had to do it as a city, it'd be quite a lot more expensive. So, um, we contract with them, they, um, charge us per, uh, registered voter. And so each election costs around forty-five thousand dollars. Um, we have three open seats, they're all city council seats. Um, each one is, um, is gonna be two or, or each one is gonna be incumbent. And so as we go forward, just know that those are the seats that are open and those are what you can apply for. Um, in two thousand fifteen, we will have a mayor seat and then two councilman seats. So every, um, couple of years, it will change. So, uh, in two thousand fifteen, that will change again. Oh, sorry, yes, twenty-twenty-five, thank you. Um, the next thing you need to know, oh, and at-large just means that you are, um, representing the whole city. That you don't represent district or precinct, you represent the whole city. Um, the next thing is the qualifications. To be able to become a candidate, um, and to run for office, these are the qualifications you need. You need to be a US citizen, you need to be eighteen years old, a registered voter, you need to have your principal residence in Spanish Fork. You need to have lived here for twelve months at least. If you annexed into the city, you need to live here for twelve months at least. And then, uh, we can't be convicted of, uh, treason or criminal offense against elections to be able to be a candidate. And then we can't have been declared mentally incompetent. There is one more that I don't have on here and that is that you can't be a county official while you're a city official. So you cannot declare candidacy if you're a county official unless you're willing to give that seat up, so. Uh, declaration of candidacy, as you can see on that little calendar, it is the first through the seventh, but the weekends do not count. So do not come in to declare over the weekends. So you can come the first, the second, the fifth, the sixth, and the seventh. And that has to be the seventh at five PM. If you come in at five oh one, I cannot accept your, um, declaration per the state. There's nothing that, that I can do, there's nobody I can call, it's just a done deal at that point. So get it in early if you're thinking about it. Uh, we'll go through a whole packet of things to let you know what's involved, uh, what kinda responsibilities and duties that you would have. Um, and that's from eight to five is when you can come in and declare. Um, there is one time where you will not, there's an exception, that you don't have to come in person. And that is if you're gone the whole time, the first through the seventh, out of state. If you're out of state that whole time, then if you would contact me and we can set up, um, an electronic, uh, interaction where I, we can see each other, we can hear each other, and then we, you can do a declaration. Um, the write-in candidate, oh, I forgot something. There is a nomination petition, that is where a resident will nominate someone to run for council. They have to get twenty-five signatures. It has to be a petition that the state requires. And, um, they would come in, they would file and say, hey, I want Kevin Euler to be nominated. And then I would call Kevin and ask him if he wants to be nominated. And then he would have to come in and declare. So if you're gonna do that, uh, do that early on so that he has time to come declare if that's what he wants to do. Um, the only other option there is if the declaration closes on the seventh at five PM, is to be a write-in candidate. Um, the only thing you should know is that your name will not be on the ballot. So that means they will just have a line on the ballot and you will have to write that person in. So it's not a great way to get votes, to have to have people to remember to write your name in. So it's just better to do the declaration. But there's the due dates, um, June first through September fifth. And it's only for the general election, the write-in doesn't apply for the primary election. Um, if you go to spanishfork.org, you can find our election information. Uh, you just go to government and then under elections. And it will have in this gray box all the different election information you may want. There's also the candidate guide if you're thinking of running. Um, again, that gives you all the forms, all the exhibits, all the things that you might wanna see, um, when you run. And then also we'll give you lots of the election dates, the different things that you may wanna know about early voting and that kinda stuff. Um, the primary election is August fifteenth. If we have seven or more people declare, um, candidacy, then we will have a primary election. So if, um, we have that primary election, only six will go on to the general election. There's only two people who go per open seat. So that would be a total of six people who would go to the general election. If six or fewer declare candidacy, then we don't have to hold a primary. We just hold that general election. It does save money to just have the general election, but if we have lots of people interested, we wanna hold that primary.
Tara, does the, the, is it forty-five thousand each election?
Yes. And... Yes. And then, um, here's a great information source at elections@utahcounty.gov. You can find out how to vote and they have a lot of other things. But the regist- you wanna register to vote by August fourth. If you've changed your address, ballots will not be forwarded. So you need to make sure to go in and change that address on your voter registration or you're not gonna get your ballot. Um, there's an absentee application, that's for people who are away from their residence um, in this, in the United States. So this could be snowbirds, this could be students, this could be missionaries. If they're somewhere else in the United States, they would wanna, um, do an absentee application. Um, the Unacaba Military or Overseas Voters is for people who are out of the states um, and they would apply there to get their ballot. Um, there's also a great, um, part of it where they have for disabled voters. This is for people, um, if your disability is temporary or if it's permanent. And so they will work with you, this might be you are blind, it might be you've just had eye surgery and you have to keep things on your eyes for a little while. They will make sure that you have the opportunity to vote. You do have to go online and to their site, the Utah County site, and apply. And they told me that they've never turned anybody away, so it's a good option if you need that. And then just to remind you that they have ballot tracks at Utah County where you can actually track your mail-in ballot. It will track it from when, um, you've mailed it and to when they've received it and what they've, the, the status of it. So you can sign up for that as well, which is always a great thing. And then if you have any information or any questions, you can always contact me at, um, this contact. And also Utah County is a great resource as well, so, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Tara? Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks Tara, appreciate that. Good to have a good professional helping us out with that stuff. Uh, okay, um, before I go to consent items, I'm reverting back to the, uh, water issue that I mentioned on the east side. Uh, if any residents have questions, you see it in the news, uh, for a, 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 oh, oh, it's not a weekly thing that, uh, we, we anticipate happening on the east side, but it happened to be a week apart, uh, up on Eighth East and Center. Uh, Seth, anything you want to, to add to that?
Yeah, we're gonna shut down all city operations today, or Friday at noon. So no, no other activities afternoon on Friday. For, the first, uh, water break was on our drinking water line, just a typical break. However, a really big break. I wanna say that, that break, Chris, was what, about a foot and a half, maybe eighteen inches or so? And so big that it, it actually washed into and broke underground, it broke into a PI line. Uh, and that was just north or just south of Center Street. That was two weeks ago on Friday. Yeah, that's, okay, a little bit longer than eighteen inches. Then exactly a week later on Friday, uh, so this one was just a break on a drinking water line and we have those, it was ductal iron, so those things, they get corroded and they can break. Then a week later on Friday afternoon, we had, uh, a contractor in the area was doing work boring, that means digging underground, and they hit a pressurized irrigation main line with their boring machine. And, and it was something that was... And it was something that was, they were boring where they thought they weren't. And so they, they had their tools working how they work and tracking how it's digging boring underground. And it's not perfect because you're, you know, you can't see it. And the machine got into the wrong place and, and ended up hitting a line that it shouldn't have hit because it shouldn't have been in that area. It had been blue-staked and marked and what, whatnot, but, but they hit it. That was a really big break, I think the numbers were, I can't remember, Chris, twelve thousand gallons per minute went to forty-five, something like that?
Yeah, a lot of water, both, both pipes were really large, but the breaks were totally unrelated.
Different lines, different breaks.
Yeah, sent a lot of water down the street and, and affected quite a few houses.
So we, we had some people turn into, we, we had to deputize some individuals, you can go ahead and talk about that there.
Well, just when I showed up on scene and everybody, obviously, our professional streets and water people and emergency people all over the place, Councilman Carden, and I caught up there. But, but then hearing the stories of not, you know, that's, that gets to be a lot of water and can be a real serious safety issue. And, and I don't know if Chris is looking for a T-shirt or not in the future either, but him and Chief Hales kicking, literally kicking in doors that, that were, you know, shut by water and, and getting people out that were inside, so, I mean, a lot of
Ju- just one door.
Just one door. Not in the, in the city engineer's description, kicking in doors, but
It is now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, again, just, it's never good timing for that stuff to happen. But again, I wanted to reiterate the, the call to action. A tired couple of crews, streets crews, water crews, emergency crews that have been dealing with the river already, probably pretty sick of water and then, and then up on the east side and, and dealing with it as well. But, but sprung into action and, and really did, you know, save, save some people. And, and it's a tough issue up, up there with some, some properties still getting figured out and, and getting cleaned up. But that's our, that's our city PIO. He likes talking about better stuff than that on the news, but that's what we have him here for, is to talk on the news about that stuff. So thanks, Nick, for keeping that clear with everybody as well, so, thanks again, staff. Okay, now we'll move to, anybody else have any questions about that? All right, item seven A, or excuse me, seven is the consent items. If there's any questions about the consent items, if there's not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion to approve consent items, A through E.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilwoman Beck, to approve the consent items. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Consent items are approved, it takes us to our public hearing part of our agenda. We have items A, B, C, and D on the public hearing agenda. And so we'll go through, we'll go through them one by one. Mr. Dave Anderson up for the first one. The GWC annexation ordinance to annex forty acres located thirty-eight hundred north, eleven hundred west with rural residential and industrial zoning. When we do have the public hearing, we'll vote to go in that public hearing. And again, if, if you can help us out by keeping your, your, your public comments brief or, or questions, and we'll try to get to answering them as, as well as we come up on these. Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The subject property in this case is located just north of the end of the runway at the airport, on the south side of State Route seventy-seven. It includes right at forty acres. Handful of different property owners are involved in the proposed annexation. Just another perspective of the such, subject properties here. In short, staff's recommendation is that the proposed annexation be approved based on the findings that we have listed there. The property is within the city's annexation policy boundary, it's within the city's growth boundary. The general plan designates the subject properties that are found within the annexation as industrial. And we believe that ultimately that is the best land use for subject properties. The proposal would have properties within the annexation area zone two different ways. Properties owned by Shep's Property and the Blunks, those would be zoned rural residential. The remaining properties would be zoned industrial one. As is described here with this particular image, the green being the rural residential and the remaining part being industrial one. Both the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have reviewed this annexation and have recommended that it be approved. And that's all that I have.
Any questions for Dave before we open up for public hearing? Okay, thank you, Dave. I'd entertain a motion to go to public hearing for item eight A.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Order to go into public hearing for this item. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing, please come up, uh, public, speak to us about this.
Hello, my name is Carl Blunk. I'm one of those, I'm that green spot there. My wife and I have, my family have lived there for thirty years. I wanna start off by saying that, that the Spanish Fork City employees are great. Seth, Dave Anderson spent a lot of time helping us to understand the annexation. But I wanna give you a little insight on the annexation of this. They're great, I'm not so sure about the city council. I don't know who did it, whether it was you or predecessors, but your invitation to new people to come into the city is, is locked in with a fine, a tax, or whatever it is, of this gonna charge me six, seven hundred dollars a year just for the job being part of the city, which nobody else is doing that. We won't get any services for that, fine, that tax. And I don't think that's appropriate. I personally, myself, will tell everybody not to annex into the city because of this. So that's, that's the one thing. The other thing is, is that the developer that's doing this, I think the city oughta hold off on this for a minute unless they can get a commitment that they will complete this project. We've had our front end of our property tore up, all the way down that street is tore up. And they've stopped complete work on it, it's been two years like that. They started further west to complete this curb and gutter, but not there. I think that we have lost our leverage because we consented to annex into the city only under the understanding that the contractor will pay those fees that the city will be charging us. And so we decided we'd go ahead and do that. But we've lost our leverage, I don't want the city to lose leverage before things get done. The other problem is that in most third world countries, we drain all the land so that we don't have mosquito problems. In Spanish Fork, you're doing just the opposite of that. To the east of me, I have a three-acre lake that's now called the Spanish Fork Mosquito, Mosquito Lake that I don't know if it's Clyden Company or Boyer and Company that is, that is, that is responsible for that now. But I think the city oughta check into that. And also the canal that is about a ten-feet open canal that goes all the way from Dry Creek to eight hundred west will never dry up. And it will constantly be a mosquito problem. I think maybe you oughta look into piping it or something. And so part of the problem right now is, and you, I've liked you seeing it, but you've stopped. So on the east side of Dry Creek, there is a little property there of about forty acres that's owned by JMM Enterprises, and they irrigate. Crandall's property, on the other side of the road to the east, has over six hundred acres that they irrigate. And the way they irrigate that is they block off Dry Creek. And they let that run for five, six, seven days, they've got a lot of water, got a lot of land to water. And when they block that off, currently, all that water that backs up, part of it goes right into that canal, causes a ten-foot canal all the way down to eight hundred west. And it just sits there for five days. It's even backing up in the drains underneath the dam that is built, the bike path. And it will never dry up because they'll water every two to three weeks. So you are gonna constantly have a mosquito problem there. Myself, I, I, it's bad, go out of the house with that. But when businesses start getting in there, you're gonna have a real problem. I don't know if you get malaria, you get West Nile virus, I've had encephalitis, I spent a week in the hospital because of it. It's a mosquito problem that you're gonna be with. I've already talked with the mosquito abatement and there are mosquitoes in there right now that they're trying to fight. But I would look into it if I was you, before you annex this, you're gonna lose your leverage as well. I don't know, maybe not, maybe it's just me. But to get, I, I think maybe you're gonna need to pipe that because it will never dry up. It will be a cattail, weed-infested canal constantly. And I just wanted you to be aware of that, so that's why I'm here today. I, I, I appreciate Spanish Fork City. And I know, I built that home thirty years ago, and I knew someday it would be a parking lot, but doggone, it's hard to, to move on.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Blunk, appreciate it. Anyone else?
My name, my name's Jared Morgan, I'm with GWC Capital, represent two of the five property owners here. We have about seventeen of the forty acres. I wanna thank Carl and Karen personally, I mean, we've, I feel like we've become good friends. I mean, we both own, both own goats and he actually helped me castrate my mussels and it was I feel like we bonded. He helped me, he just gave me the tools to do. I just, I, I tell Carl and Karen often that I, I can, I can empathize with them. I, I see this on both sides all the time, like, I know we're disrupting people's life and their quality of life. I also, my life gets disrupted around me. I live in Riverton City and there's a developer behind me developing three acres that I am opposed to, right? Like, it's, it's challenging and I, I, I understand it. And I'm, I'm glad, I'm grateful for Carl's words and, I mean, I, I know it's, it's tough. I feel like we've tried to be, be really good neighbors over the last couple of years, they have put up with a lot. The, the regional lift station that we've installed here with the city and the, the special service district, it's been a lot, I mean, the sewer's thirty feet deep here. I mean, Carl's, Carl, the, the, the trenching that we had to do here to, to get the sewer in front of Carl's home, you know, we're twenty feet deep. I mean, it's, it was a lot. And I, I, we thank Carl and Karen for their patience and, 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 you know, the Shep, Shep family too. There's been a lot of construction, I know it's dragged on. You know, Carl talks about some of the timelines, it's been two years, yeah, it, it's been a long time. There's a lot of parties here that have to get on board. And UDOT finally just got us their approval for all of the roadway expansion, the box culverts that we have to install at Dry Creek. There's just, there's a lot of logistics that go into expanding a state road like that. You know, unfortunately Carl fronts, his frontage is all the right there, so. We're, we're progressing really, really well along here. We will be all tied in and, and done in, in August with this stretch of, of the improvements. And then we'll, we'll finish off the, the UDOT enhancement on SR seventy-seven. So, you know, it's taken a little while longer than we anticipated, but we're close. And we're, we're really preparing the way for some pretty incredible development here, so. Just want to say those, you know, mention those few items and, and, and also mention that, you know, we're, we're, you have additional acreage coming in up here to the north on an additional annexation that we're exploring. So we're excited to continue the conversation as we, as we look at a pretty unique and incredible, you know, industrial park in the city of Spanish Fork, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Anyone else for public comment on this item? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Marshall, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, discussion back up here amongst the council. Questions top of mind for, for the staff, for the applicant, for Dave?
I have a couple, who would I ask about the tax that Carl referenced, the annual tax?
I would need to ask Carl, I don't know what he's talking about there.
We've lived there thirty years very happily with our own water and old septic system. And, and now because the sewer line is out front of us and we annex, you're gonna charge us fees every month for sewer and water that we will not be able to, we, we could take twenty, thirty thousand dollars and tie into it, but we're not willing to do that at this time. And so you're just gonna be charging us those fees. Luckily Clyden Company is gonna pay those fees for us, but anybody else that comes into the city, they would charge those fees. If they hook up, well, then they're gonna get that service, but if they don't, you guys still charge those fees. I think that oughta be done away with. I would be, I, that was on my biggest holdoff. Poor, poor Jared has been, been trying to get us for a year and a half to sign up with his annex thing. And, and, I mean, that's, I, I don't wanna be paying those kind of fees every month and for years that I'm there, we're not receiving any services from it. So I will tell everybody that, from the county that wants to annex into the city, not to do it, just for that aspect of it. I mean, Seth and Dave spent a lot of time with us, crossed a lot of things. I was very happy, but you do that, so that's what it is.
Okay, so are these impact fees?
No, he's talking about the base rate. So if you, if you are, so I can, I can explain that now, thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, with, the term tax and the term fee really are, you know, different to us and, and there is an important difference there. But if you're, if you have a service, if you have a service on, and, and you come into the city, so if you have a vacant field with no services, then there are no utilities, no base rates there. But, but there are some base rates that we do have to charge people according to our ordinances. So if our sewer is within a certain distance, then you have to pay that base rate, even if you don't connect, as, as he said. So that is, that is how our ordinance, ordinances read today. So those are, whatever, whatever the dollar amount is, would be associated with base rates that as a resident, anybody else is paying and would have the opportunity to connect to and use the services that come from those, just like you said. So not a tax, but it is, it is a monthly base rate with that utility bill.
This is similar to, to what other cities do, and it's kinda connected to the state health. They, they want to get rid of as many septic tanks as possible. Whenever they come in and do permitting or funding for sewer systems, they actually write into the agreements that we will, we will try to get residents to hook onto the sewer when they're within a certain distance. It's very difficult to force, it costs a lot of money to connect. And, and so we and other cities just start charging the base rate once the sewer line's in front. The reason behind that is that sewer line is only dedicated to that resident. So whether they connect on it or not, that's their portion of the sewer line that eventually they will connect to. And so it's, it's the cost to maintain that line rather than passing that cost on to, you know, someone who, that sewer line wasn't really needed for their residence. So that's kinda the history behind it.
And is the fee he's telling us pretty accurate, about six hundred dollars a year?
Uh, it's, it's about around twenty dollars for sewer, I can look it up, but, and then around ten dollars for water a month.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
So if they hook to the sewer and water, the impact fee is just the sewer and water? It's not thirty thousand dollars?
This, this is not an impact fee, this is just the base rate.
No, but if, if they connect to the sewer and water, they just pay those two impact fees?
Well, he's talking about the cost to do the work as well. Yeah, he, he's digging a hole, putting in the pipes, doing that, that labor. Yeah, I, I think that's all included in, in that rough number that he's, he's pitching out there. I get that, Carl.
So Carl, are you for or against, I can't tell? Come on, sorry.
I have anxiety about it.
That I got.
At this point, we're probably on our way out, I mean, because we're in an industrial park. But I do see problems in the future with, with that water issue that the city's gonna fight all along.
Gotcha.
And I, I would look into that. And I, I would look into that. And, and am I for or against it? I don't know. I've been out there in the beautiful, nobody around us for so long, it's really hard. But, but...
That's probably good, that's probably a good answer.
Clyde's paying the fees now, so I guess I'm against.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Dave? There you are. This is a legislative action, right? We're gonna, the recommendation is to zone it I-1 and RR, combination of. We have no other legislative action after this if we zone this today, correct?
The next likely step would be if somebody wanted to change the rural residential zoning.
Carl's property, then we would come back and have this conversation.
Quite probably be the last, I would guess.
All right, but if, if the developer wanted to come in and develop today, after this, they have approval to put an I-1 use on that property, correct?
Completely administrative.
Completely administrative.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just wanna, why we typically don't go zoning, that's not, that's not a true statement. We've, it's sort of hit and miss. Sometimes we annex all R-1 or RR and then have another legislative action once we understand what's going there, why it's going there. So why in this case do we wanna have one step instead of two?
I would answer that this way. The property's ripe for development. Utilities are there now primarily because of the work that the Clyde Company's doing or will be when that's done. Development that occurs that's consistent with the provisions of the industrial one zone, that's exactly what the city is expected to see. That's what we plan for. We don't necessarily view, um, there being any potential land uses within that zone that would be a problem, that we would maybe wanna vet as part of, you know, some type of legislative review that might come with a zone change, um, to maybe compare this area with some properties that we've looked at, let's just say west of the airport where there have been, where there are significant utility deficiencies, access deficiencies and things like that. In those cases, um, we've only been comfortable as staff recommending that industrial one zoning be granted when it was accompanied with a pretty descriptive development agreement that defined what could and couldn't happen until different improvements were made and that type of a thing. So I guess it's maybe somewhat like that except that this is right at, you know, the doorstep to a new area that's certainly, we anticipate gonna see a lot of industrial growth and development. And it's, it's pretty much ready to, to go now.
Dave, I may have missed it and I apologize if I did. The Shep family was here when we first started talking about this. Did, have they, they're not here tonight. Have they said where they're at with this annexation at this point?
I have not heard that they want to be annexed. So that, that's the best way I can put it.
They submitted probably a dozen questions, which we reviewed and answered. Many of their questions were similar to some of the conversations and questions that the Blunks had, uh, that we reviewed with them in some of the meetings that he referenced. And we, we submitted those back to them probably ten days ago. But I, and I haven't heard anything from them either.
Thank you. I did have a question, or you can ask.
Yep, good.
And I don't know if this would be for Dave or Chris, but when Carl talked about all the mosquitoes down in that area, I know this really doesn't apply to us zoning this right now. But is that something we should worry about in the future? Do we let the developers that come in worry about that type of thing? What would your suggestion be?
Yeah, I think, I think we should look at that for sure. A lot of the problems with the developer, I think Jared could probably speak to this better than I could, but is getting the permitting for the culvert under State Route seventy-seven. That's held up a lot of things. So anyway, uh, the, it's very flat. So there, there will always be drainage problems in that area, or at least slow draining, uh, problems in that area, so.
Still hence mosquitoes forever.
Well, you can get them treated. You, you can, uh, you can treat fruit mosquitoes, but we don't prefer that. So we'll, we'll look at it from an engineering standpoint. We want it to drain.
We don't, we don't wanna create and/or continue a situation that makes it worse, right? The natural landscape can be what it is, but we don't have to make it worse, right? With, with how the irrigation happens. So do you think, Chris, that with a different culvert and different system out there, that it, the irrigation as it was described will be different? Or is there a different mechanism that needs to be put in place?
Yeah, I think, I think probably what will be looked at is grades and just making sure it's built per design and those issues first. Piping is, is a real issue in that area. So with, with how flat the ground is and where the drainage areas are for it to, to flow to, so.
Probably a little higher this year than, than other years as, as well, right? Mr. Blunt, yeah?
Yeah.
One more thing.
So along that fore end down there, when you came down to the creek down there, where your, where his transfer state, the pump station is, the, the pipe just goes out into that creek. At the minimum, you need to put a gate in there that crandles and those that irrigate over there can shut that gate so all their water doesn't come all the way back up to the end of the road down there. I mean, it just comes up there for five or six days, sits there and then it goes out. Well, that is clay out there. It's never gonna drain. So that's a minimum thing that I think needs to be done. So the crandles when they water, they put their dam in, go over there, shut that gate so their water just goes there and not comes back up the other way.
I think that's a good issue to address and, and we'll probably want to get with the engineers that designed that. My gut feeling is it might be easier to, to redo the diversion structure for the crandles so it doesn't back it up that much. But we might have to look at some other options.
Thank you, Chris. Anything else?
I guess to Chris and those points, um, do we have enough, in the steps that proceed or follow this, preliminary plat approval, final plat approval, do we have enough administrative teeth to make these things happen?
Can I say that?
Sorry, Von.
Those are the legal terms.
That's a good question. Uh, we, we will follow our standards.
That's, that's what I expect from you.
I don't know exactly what they all entail, honestly, all the engineering standards.
If there's something more specific that you want, then I think this is a moment to have that conversation and maybe through annexation agreement or something like that, get that resolved, right?
That's probably a better place to put it.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know that I have something specific. It's hard to talk in specificity at this level.
Yeah, well, and, and I don't know that we have all the answers to give to the specific questions that you have, right? I don't, we haven't looked at the crandles structure. I have no idea what that's gonna cost and that's certainly not something we're, we should want to take on with that annexation, right? So.
Okay, so as this, as this moves forward, then there'll be an annexation agreement where Chris has a chance to weigh in on those things?
Go ahead, Von.
If you make an annexation agreement part of your motion, then we would do one. But if you don't...
Currently, there is not one.
There is not one.
Currently, okay. The process from this point on, then, if we approve it tonight, as is preliminary plat approval, we don't see it again, moves on.
It, it's normally handled with the development, construction drawings.
Okay.
So if they, if, Von, if the council wants some specific actions in the annexation, they should give us that specific information now? Or if we don't have it, table it, get it, and then maybe even have the draft of the agreement?
Yes, you're right. I mean, either give us clear direction now about which, which feature do you want in the agreement or table it.
And the cradle ground you're talking about is the ground north of, of the highway there?
Yeah, see where that PF is?
Yeah.
I think, I think they, they would probably be in this area, right?
Yeah. That we're talking about, Mr. Blunt?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which currently isn't annexed, not part of Spanish Fork City, possibly could be in the future.
Nope. No, this ground is actually in Springville today. The Springville boundary runs like that today.
Their declaration, not, not in there.
No, it's in the city today. And, and it's just this little bit. And then the creek traverses that way and the land is on the other side of the creek.
My question then is how does the annexation that we're looking at today, how does this piece of land or the issue that we're actually discussing have to do with the annexation that we're looking at today? I don't know that it does.
I think that's fair. I mean, as you look at the bigger picture, this whole thing is surrounded by I-1. Talking a little piece, so it's probably, in the big scheme of things, irrelevant.
Okay. I think my, my, my thoughts there are in the area of development that's, that's, that's coming here. Just like the property owner now, I think the future property owner is the money they invest in here. They are gonna try to mitigate that stuff too, whether it's spraying like it's never been sprayed before and then realizing that's not a good thing forever. So, so how do we mitigate it? I think you see a lot of things happening around here for, for what's, uh, what's planned to come and, and some of that being a mitigating factor in hopefully drying up some of the ground. It's hard to dry up anything this year, right? But, but yeah, if there's ways for, if the council's partial to, to an agreement being added here for, for a specific area of, of what that water, how that water gets turned out and sits there, then we can discuss that.
This probably would've been more appropriate conversation when we annex the rest of that I-1. To the east. Yeah.
To the west.
Whatever.
Well, that matters. Cause...
Directions don't matter to an...
The property, I think the property we're talking about, right? This is the line. It's, it's for sure this property and I think that one, so.
On the agenda tonight.
Uh, I don't think...
No.
Yeah, I don't think that was on the agenda tonight.
I was talking about this. When we annexed...
Oh, that's already in the city.
I know that.
Okay.
When, when we annexed it, this was a better conversation.
You had a, you had a suffix on there. I didn't hear that. I'm sorry. Apologize.
No problem.
I heard a change.
Okay.
I think I'm okay to move forward as...
I am too. Make an entrance.
In this motion. So I'll go ahead and move that the proposed annexation be approved with industrial one and RR zoning as described on the zoning exhibit based on the findings that Dave presented.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Euler on item eight A. Any questions on that motion? Okay, so roll call vote, Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item's approved on eight A. Moves us to item eight B. Trails on Main ordinance to change the official zoning map from rural residential to residential four and proposed preliminary plat approval request for master plan development on a fifteen acre site located at fifteen twenty-seven South Main Street.
Again, Mr. Mayor, thank you. As you just mentioned, there are two different parts to this proposal. First of all, a zone change and then a proposed preliminary plat as well. And there are quite a few different, different elements to what's proposed and also to staff's recommendation. I'm gonna try to go through those without taking all night, but I do wanna be deliberate and not miss anything that's worth, worth taking some time to talk about. There we go. So to start with, subject property's located, I would say on South Main, just a little bit south of the Main Street Arrowhead Trail intersection. It's located between Main Street and the Spanish Fork River outline there in the yellow. Fifteen and a half acres. Subject property's currently zoned rural residential. Again, one of the parts of the proposal is a zone change. The proposal's to have the, the zoning change to R-4. I'm just gonna come right out and start with this. Staff's recommendation is that both the proposed preliminary plat and zone change be denied. And I'll talk about this recommendation more as we go through our presentation. Uh, there is a parking issue. There is an issue with, uh, being able to deliver sewer service to, to the subject property. And then lastly, uh, this being staff's recommendation, we today aren't comfortable recommending that a zone change be approved to accommodate a project that would require modification of the floodplain. It's gonna take a little bit for me to get used to this slight delay on advancing, so I apologize. Get the timing down sometime. Parking. So just to jump in quickly, uh, these are images that the applicant provided. I'll reference them a little bit later as well. And incidentally, I'm gonna touch on the highlights of staff's recommendation and let the applicant do a deep dive on their project. Uh, they have material that is a lot better at that than what I can do. The numbers say everything about staff's recommendation. Uh, we require two and a half parking spaces per home or per unit, uh, which in this case with two hundred and seventy-nine units, uh, leads to a number that's just under seven hundred required parking space, excuse me, spaces the applicant has provided, just over five hundred. So it's because of that deficiency that, uh, we, with that first point, have recommended that the project be denied because they, they don't meet the city's current parking requirement. The applicant provided these two images to illustrate how they could, however, meet the parking requirement. The image on the left is as the development is currently proposed with the five hundred and seven stalls. The image on the right shows what it might look like if they added additional surface parking to get to that two point five spaces per home requirement. And I'll let them, uh, talk about their reasoning for, uh, for making the proposal at five hundred and seven stalls in their presentation. So just talk a little bit more about that. As I mentioned, this is the same image that we saw just a moment ago on the right, um, with what they would have to do to accommodate that two point five stalls per unit requirement. Incidentally, I'll mention as well that the proposed parking here is also intended to serve as parking for, uh, the park space that's being proffered as part of the proposal. Personally, I don't think that's necessarily a big deal. Uh, potentially maybe on weekends and things like that when your, your parking demand for the residential side of things might be higher than during the week, uh, when also demand for parking at the park might be higher. But again, uh, just imagery that the applicant's provided, this is based on the city's current standard, what it, uh, potentially would need to look like to meet the current standard. If that was reduced by a quarter of a space per home, this thins what it potentially would look like, less of what's proposed to be a park covered with asphalt and parking, and then down to two spaces per unit. Again, kinda struggling with the delay here. There we go. It would look like that, uh, with that additional parking that's in that purple kinda color, um, and so forth. But this is what's proposed, one point eight two spaces per unit. And again, with that deficiency, staff simply can't recommend that the project be approved. There we go, sewer. Simply put, uh, at present, uh, the applicant does not have right of way or aneasement to be able to construct a sewer line to the subject property. Um, that's not uncommon. It's not uncommon for applicants at this stage not have all of those things buttoned up. Uh, we as staff are getting, uh, more particular about making recommendations for projects that are in this, this situation. The... Again, not uncommon for, for example, staff to recommend that projects be approved uh, with a condition that applicants are able to obtain, uh, the ability to construct off-site utilities and so forth. Council's aware of at least a few situations in recent months and recent years where, because applicants have not been able to work out things with their neighbors and so forth to build roads and utilities, uh, you've been asked to do everything, including potentially exercise eminent domain to secure, uh, the ability for those things to be constructed. It's at least partly because of that that, uh, we're hesitant, more so today than we've been in the past, to recommend that a project be approved, uh, until, uh, the details of, of off-site utilities are, are nailed down. Let me also mention that I think in all likelihood... Let me also mention that I think in all likelihood, through one way or another, this applicant likely could come up with a way to get sewer service to their property. One of the reasons that this is on your agenda tonight really is to get feedback from the councils to whether or not you think this is worth additional time and effort on the part of the applicant by way of trying to iron different issues like that out. And finish off for that as another perspective. The floodplain, which for us is not just an issue of floodplain, but also density. Didn't mention that as part of the recommendation, but it's important to understand. And it's just complicated enough that it's kind of hard to explain. So I'm going to use again some imagery that I appreciate the applicant has provided. This is the project, again, I'll let the applicant go through the details of that, that shows the subject property with the two areas there colored red and blue. The red area is known by FEMA as the floodway. In short, nothing can happen in the floodway. It's effectively the river channel up to the brim of the channel itself. Outside of that, in the blue, you have the 100-year floodplain. In short, we don't allow developments to count, developers, applicants to count unbuildable land, which both what's red and blue there is by our ordinance defined as unbuildable land in an equation that ultimately tells us how many homes they can have in a particular development, homes per acre more specifically, based on a particular zoning district. With what's proposed here, the R4 zone, the maximum number of homes per acre is 20. So working through a few more specifics about the proposal, what the applicant has proposed is that this portion of the site itself, that part of what is currently in the 100-year floodplain be pulled out of the floodplain. And that happens by a property owner going through a process with FEMA to do different things to ultimately make it so that that is no longer identified on FEMA's maps as being in the 100-year floodplain. And when it gets to that point, we, per our ordinance, count that as buildable acreage. So a couple of other things to note. They're proposing that this area here be allowed to remain in the 100-year floodplain with what's proposed. And of course, the floodway be left alone as well, that area that was shown in red back here. By the way, I really appreciate this new remote. Thank you. There's nothing that can be done with what's in red. That just simply by FEMA's description can't be modified, can't be altered, nothing like that. So what we're left with then is acknowledged by the applicant here, as is mentioned on this image. The city ordinance does not grant density for property within the floodway or the 100-year floodplain. But then shifting down to that last paragraph, they're not asking for density within the floodway, but they are asking for density from what's shown there in the blue. In short, to be able to do that, we would have to amend our ordinance. And that certainly is something that you as the council could direct staff to do. But that's what would be required, and I'll touch on that a little bit later. This can be misleading, so I want to do my best to try to describe what we're illustrating here. But by way of how we calculate how many homes a project can have within the provisions of a particular zone, we start with the amount of acreage that is in a particular project. The subject property, in this case, it's just over 15 and a half acres. We would subtract out the floodway and the floodplain and get to a number of developable acres. Then it's a matter of the number of homes or units, talk about units per acre. So that's units divided by developable acres. Now, this is the part that is a little bit misleading because the applicants indeed are proposing to pull some of the subject property out of the floodplain, this area here, which does change the equation. But it still doesn't get them to less than 20 units per acre. So this 30 unit per acre number, that would be if none of the subject property were being taken out of the floodplain. But indeed, they're proposing that some of it would be. But even with what they're proposing to remove from the floodplain by again, working with FEMA, they're above 20 units per acre, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. Another thing that I want to touch on is that there's about seven tenths of an acre that is on the other side of the Spanish Fork River. So disconnected from what I think you would consider to be the project. And that's seven tenths of an acre right in this area. This is working so well. In this area right here. I don't know if that's because the river has changed course over the years. We'll talk about another thing relative to that in a moment. In my mind, this isn't necessarily a big deal with what I understand the applicant's doing if they were proposing to dedicate that land to the city, for example. I believe it is in the floodplain, but it's at least adjacent to the city trail. So it might be of some value there, some type of trailside park or something. But of that 15.54 acres, again, seven tenths of it is on the other side of the river, disconnected from the development in that way. Going? Here we go. Let's go. Try it again. There we go. Another thing that was brought to our attention in the planning commission meeting, we've got an easement that hasn't been recorded, as I understand it. That's something that we can work on as staff. There were some commitments made by the city, as I understand it, to folks that own property right here, McKell's. So this is not part of the subject property, nor is it part of the development. But it is on the west side of the river, just as this property here is part of the development, so to speak. But on the east side of the river, so again, not part of the subject property. I don't believe necessarily the applicant's trying to be misleading or anything, but some of the imagery might suggest that what would be public park goes all the way to the river without acquiring that from the McKell's. That would not be the case, so just to be clear about that. The applicant has proffered to donate some six acres of parkland to the city and to provide $1 million for the city to use improving the park. The applicant also requested in the planning commission meeting that the city waive the parks and recreation impact fees for the development. I don't know exactly what that number is, but let's say it's something less than $1 million. I mentioned in the planning commission meeting, I'm going to reiterate it now, that park impact fees can't be just waived. They must be paid by somebody. So one way or another, that would have to occur, and I'll touch on that here in just a moment. In fact, right here. So by way of the concerns that staff has raised about parking, city council has a handful of different options there. First of all, you could simply reduce the amount of parking that's required. Maybe in the proposed zone, the R4 zone, you could reduce it down to 1.82 as the applicant, I think, has proposed here, or maybe as you saw by any other amount between the current standard and that one. That is an option, but somehow, in order for the council to be able to approve this proposal, some type of text amendment relative to parking would have to occur. Or the applicant would have to pursue that particular design that you saw where they have the full 698 parking spaces on the subject property. Density.
So Dave, real quick, on parking, is this a zone-by-zone requirement or is this a blanket two and a half?
It's a little bit of both. So in this particular case, I think the R4 zone says 2.5 spaces per unit.
Okay.
And maybe to your point, one option could be to create a new zoning district that within just that district would have its own parking requirement. Also, you could create a new zoning district that would maybe allow for more homes per acre than 20.
Right now, 20s are top end.
Right now, 20s are top end. So what that conceivably could accomplish by having a zone that allows for higher density is just that, that one part of the equation would change. So even with maybe, let's just say, the nine developable acres that they would have, if we took the most stringent way of looking at it, they could get up to 32, I speak, or something like that. You could also simply change the density allowed in the R4 zone. So there's lots of different action that could be taken to accommodate what we're seeing tonight, if that's what the council would like to see occur. City could do things to help acquire right of way or an easement to address the sewer problem. Again, we've been asked to do that. That comes up from time to time, just as people are talking with staff relative to the likelihood that the council would be supportive of that type of action. That certainly hasn't been something that, as I've observed, this council or previous ones have done often, but you have the ability to do that. When it comes to paying the applicant's park impact fees, you have the ability to do that, as I understand it. That's a budgetary issue that ultimately you could address. And incidentally, I'm offering these as options if the council is inclined to try to make this project work. That is not staff's recommendation. So to be clear, I'm not trying to speak out of both sides of my mouth, but rather to present all of the different scenarios as best as I can succinctly as to what could happen here. I feel that I need to mention as well that the applicant could do things to bring the project into conformity with current standards and so forth, a way of reducing the number of units on the property, different things like that. I do want to touch on this briefly. Lots of different things going on here in terms of park space that the public would access through private property, private parking, all kinds of other things. This is a good candidate for a development agreement. So I would suggest that if the council's inclined to have this move forward, that any approvals be conditioned upon ironing out a lot of issues in that document just so that everybody's on the same page and things get memorialized the right way. Again, I'm going to kind of go through this quickly. There's one other thing that I think I'm struggling with. I'm going to go back to this really quickly. I missed a slide. I hit things too quickly. Just to touch on the general plan and to talk about one thing that is not part of staff's recommendation, and it's the river bottoms. There's been a lot of conversation about, you know, the future for different lands that are in the river bottoms. The river bottoms itself haven't been explicitly defined, except this way, in my opinion, by way of lands that the city has designated agricultural on the general plan for a really, really long time. And in the case of this area, it's basically everything east of the river, all the way up to the golf course. In this case, the lands between the river and Main Street have been designated for something else for a while, though. The designation of this property on the general plan is mixed use. So you can see the different zoning districts there that are consistent with that that mixed-use general plan designation. R4 is one of those. I would also mention that R4 is the most aggressive in terms of the density that's allowed and that type of a thing. It's rare for the council to see anything but that. Developers typically are requesting a zone change to the zoning district within a general plan range that would accommodate the greatest density and intensity. But just wanted to mention that as well. And again, back to staff's recommendation, I'll just end with that and would be happy to answer any questions that you have. But I believe the applicant has a presentation that paints a much better picture of exactly what they're proposing to do and that type of a thing.
So one of your concerns was not that it didn't meet the general plan, it actually does.
I believe it does.
Okay.
Yeah, potentially, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave before we hear from the applicant?
Long list.
You got a list?
I have a list, but I want to hear that.
Perfect. Yes, the applicant can come, and then we'll open it up to public hearing after that.
Council members, mayor, staff, appreciate you guys all having us here. It's been, we've been talking with you guys a long time. I don't even think I had a beard when we first started talking, so that's how long it's been. I just want to start out by first apologize, I've got kind of a little bit of a scratchy throat here. So if I start squeaking, I'm doing my best here. I won't get too crazy on some of the stuff that Dave already elaborated on. You know where the property is. As Dave explained, it is general planned as mixed use, and the R4 density that we're asking for is consistent with mixed use. Currently zoned RR, and we wanted to highlight that it's across the street, essentially from the Sky Meadows project, which has some similar zoning in there. Our project is 15.8 acres. It consists of four buildings. There's the product mix right there, 21 studio, 139 one-bedroom, 101 two, 18 three-bedroom. So this project's grown into kind of more than just a multifamily project to us at this point. And you'll see that a lot of the things that we're going to present to you guys tonight are going to reflect not just these buildings and things, but our vision for this property and a vision that we've created along working with the city, some ideas we have. You'll see the product mix, it does grow from studio apartments, and we want to make sure that we have ones, twos, and threes. The reason for that is we have a really, really great idea on how to not only help people get into a home that they can afford by providing this type of housing, but also give them a way that they can grow into homeownership, because that is the American dream. That's the basis of the American dream is that we can own homes. And so I'm going to defer to Steve real quick. This is Steve Bond, and he's got a quick comment on... Let me stay in front of the microphone while I'm talking. On an idea on how to, what we wanted to do to help our tenants acquire homeownership.
Thank you, Mayor Mendenhall, council and staff. I really appreciated your comments and introduction to the project as well. Stephen Bond, I'm the broker-owner of a small boutique brokerage in Provo, Utah, and a minority partner on this project. Last week, I spent the majority of the week in DC actually talking to economists and legislators specifically about the crisis of affordable housing and what's going on and these interest rates and how they're not helping anyone. They are good to help slow down inflation in that way, but there's unintended consequences affecting a lot of the bottom lines of many, many of us. One of the things that was discussed that is the biggest issue is supply. It's not demand. We have plenty of people wanting to own or live in our communities. And if you live in a home that has any type of accessory space, most likely you're looking at neighbors with other cars in their front areas because someone's living in that space, a kid, a friend, a relative. Someone is in those extra spaces looking for their own place to call home. A recent study by the Federal Reserve in 2019 that was updated by the economists at the National Association of Realtors showed that in 2022, the wealth gap of renters versus owners is the net worth of renters nationally is an average of $8,000. The net worth of a homeowner is $320,000. And that's the difference between someone being able to retire at some point and not. And we take that incredibly seriously. I know we're promoting here inventory that's not specific to that, but our concept in property management is that we want to reward good-paying renters. The goal is to allow for percentages of rents to go towards down payment assistance so that when they rent for one, two, or three years, that when they work through the property management company to have on-time payments, we reward them towards homeownership and actually allow them some of those monies back through referral fees to brokerages where commissions are basically paid back to renters to become homeowners and help them in that path. The goal is to get them out. Everyone needs a home to stay, but the goal is to get them into ownership because that's where they become incredible parts of the community. Not that renters aren't, but that's where they stay longer. That's where they tend to raise their kids. That's where they tend to raise their kids. And so that's one of our, our programs that we want to implement specifically and pilot with this project is to create this vehicle where we create homeownership more quickly and readily accessible to the renters that will be occupying in these, these great units here. So excited to be a part of the project. And again, thank you for, for allowing me to speak and take time in your council meeting.
Thanks, Steve.
Appreciate it, Steve. So since we started talking to you guys at the very start, oh, I'm doing the same thing Dave's doing here. Since we started talking at the start, the river bottoms have always been sensitive to the city. Our project's been designed in order to keep our buildings as far away from the, the river bottoms as possible and to create accessibility, not exclusivity. So if you take a look at your, the map of your amazing river trail, you've got a, I didn't do that. Maybe I did, I don't know. You gotta, you've got access at either end. The trail's approximately four point one-eight miles long. There's access parking here at the sports park and over here at Poplar. It's four point one-eight miles without a parking lot, without amenities. I know there is a porta potty out here, out here somewhere. Our idea was, let's not keep, right now this property's owned by one person, it's got barbed wire on it, it's gated, you can't use it, you can't get to the river, you can walk the trail. Our idea all along has been, let's open up this trail to the city, to the residents of Spanish Fork. So just a quick rendering of the project shown with drone footage, you can see where the river lies. You can see, this is actually a piece, the design on this park is actually in conjunction with Dell and Bart over at Parks. Met with them a number of times and came up with some of the amenities that they could see being in this park. So keep that in mind as I show you these slides. You can see, this is how our buildings lay out with the open space, just some different views, some different ideas. There's a clubhouse, there'll be a private amenity, of course, and but, and then, you know, our idea is tot lots and things like that out in the park area. For the residents of Spanish Fork, things like bathrooms would be amazing right here. Obviously, a parking spot, a trailhead, a place to actually access the, the river at a different, or the trail at a different location. Tot lot, hydration stations, pavilions, things like that. The way we've designed this is really cool. Envisioned tot lots, things right here where the kids can play. This trail actually connects right out here to the, to the Main Street Trail. The Main Street Trail is there existing, it will be moved a little bit with the UDOT requirements, but still run along there. So you connect right here, and then approximately this right here where I'm going creates about a half mile loop. So if you're a mother with your young kids, you can put them on the toys and, and get your exercise in running that trail, but also always stay in close proximity to them. We, in, in coming up with this idea, we've always been super impressed with how Boise, Idaho did their green belt along the river. And so we actually took a trip down there and searched for a project that we felt like embodied what we were trying to do. So right now, this project here is about, it's really close to ours. It's about fifty percent open space and about fifty percent is like the living area. And so I just have a quick video here that kind of shows you some footage of how their project is and then also blends in ours and how we envision ours looking. It actually has music. I think we got it muted. This is, we're going for the awkward silence part here.
Sure.
And Steve spoke first. This project is really cool. I mean, they have some amazing amenities and things that's right on that river trail. It's really crazy, it had a bridge that goes across, just like the bridge goes across right here on our property. Nice. Try out the new sound system. Yeah, I mean, this is a massive deal of open space on that, that project, but. So as has been expressed to you guys already, our biggest feature for this project is this big park. So right now, as you've already heard, and what I'm going to explain to you now is we proposed a few, a couple of things to make this project work the way it is. That doesn't mean it has to be exactly like this. Our number one goal here has been to create this open space for the city. And, and so we've worked hard to do that. So in talking with Dell, there's a, a city mandate for them to have a park within a half mile of all the residents in the city. And they expressed to us that it is the cost of land and, and improvements and things nowadays, it's very difficult to meet that mandate when you've got to buy property and improve it as well. So what we're proposing is that we contribute this six point two acres to the city for a city park. The value of that land, we're estimating at around three million dollars. In addition to the three million dollar land value, we're going to donate to the city an additional one million dollars towards the improvements. We are asking for, it doesn't have to be a waiver, it can be a credit, whatever, whatever the structures that works on this, we're asking to waive or credit back the park fee since we're already putting up that, that contribution to the city's parks. Now, big issue to make this park happen is the parking. We've talked, talked about it, I've talked to the staff about it since we started here. I know you guys have had many, many parking discussions. So what I've provided here is just a quick glimpse, and I can provide the whole report if you'd like it. It's, it's public record. Hell's Engineering did a parking study for a project in Draper City, studied nineteen projects in Salt Lake and Utah counties to better understand parking and supply. Fifteen of those were typical apartment complexes and four of them are transit friendly. So they did locations in Oran, Pleasant Grove, South Salt Lake, Harriman, around Salt Lake Valley. You can see they did it at night when most of the people would be there so they could get a conservative number on parking. Within that, within these numbers, they also assumed that every single garage had a car parked in it. So that makes their numbers a little bit more conservative. Their study came out to this right here. You can see the number of, of parking requirement for each of these projects when they're, on their study. Average of one point five-nine stalls per unit. What we did is we took our project, created a formula, and, and plugged our project with our product mix into some surrounding cities to try and, and illustrate what would be required in those cities. You can see Lehigh one point seven-six, two point one-three, I mean, you can read the list. I want to also show you how I came to these numbers so that this makes sense to you. Essentially, we take a city's ordinance, say Lehigh, multifamily, one bedroom or less, they require one stall per unit and one guest stall for every three units. And one of those stalls is fully enclosed under a parking structure. Then if it's two bedrooms or more, they require two stalls per unit with one guest parking per three, same one, one enclosed. So once we take that, essentially we do that for every city, plug their ordinance into Excel and a formula. So you can see a studio, we have twenty-one studios. That would have required one plus point three-three per unit for guests, one point three-three total with one enclosed. So our twenty-one studios in Lehigh would have required twenty-one enclosed and twenty-eight total. We did that for the one bedrooms, the two bedrooms and the threes. Once again, our exact project plugged into these cities. And that, in the end, gives you this number over here, one point seven-six, one point eight-six, one point five-five. So if I go back to that slide I just showed you a second ago, that's where these numbers came from. This is how this would come, so you know Spanish Fork's requirement is two point five per stall, per unit blanket? This is what would be required for our project in these cities. And I'm happy to give you that spreadsheet if, actually, I already gave it to the staff if, if you have interest in seeing.
Mike, can you go back?
You bet.
Can I ask questions?
Where at?
Is that all right? I'm going to, I don't care.
This one?
Which one? This one right here. So that total parking on that, that first column, if you propose this in those cities, that would be the requirement?
This exact product mix, twenty-one studios, exactly. This is what each of those cities will require.
And here you're proposing five oh-seven. So in some cases you would meet it, in some cases you wouldn't.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. You bet. Appreciate the questions. You already saw this, this is a, this isn't a hundred percent to scale, but this is approximately, the reason that we don't want to provide two point five stalls if the city can get behind this idea is that there goes the park. That's essentially what those stalls, just a quick overlay of how much space those stalls would take. Now, you'll notice also that you don't see any exterior garages. We, in order to, once again, try and maximize, maximize open space, there's no detached garages in there because we provided underground parking under the buildings. You've seen, you've seen this with Dave's numbers, so we've, oh, let's see, there we go. Two hundred and seventy-nine units, five hundred and seven. One thing I do want to point out is the city's requirement is sixty percent of the units having enclosed. We are a little bit higher than that, it's sixty-seven percent. Once again, that's under each of these buildings. To elaborate a little bit more on what Dave said about the FEMA flood zones, the floodway, as he said, is the dark blue, the teal is the hundred-year floodplain. We're not proposing any changes to the floodway. We are coordinating with FEMA to pull the buildings out of the hundred-year floodplain through a process called a CLOMER F, where essentially we build the buildings, design them, they give us a conditional, CLOMER means conditional letter of map removal, map revision. So they'll essentially give us the direction, which, what, what it is, is these, these, Spanish Fork City Code requires buildings to be in the floodplain to be built two feet out above the floodplain elevation. These buildings are actually, the finished grade of the main floor would be six feet out of the floodplain elevation, so quite a bit higher. And I want to point out that that actually puts the finished grade about a foot and a half above Main Street. So we feel like as far as the floodplain goes, there's probably a whole lot of Spanish Fork that's gonna have to flood before these buildings would flood. To elaborate a little bit more on that, the parking lots and the roads are one foot above the flood elevation, consistent with the FEMA standard. The entrance to the parking garage meets the city's standard in that it's two feet above the flood elevation. Now, if you're picturing this, the parking garage is going to go down underground, so the parking garage will be underground, but the water would have to go two feet above that flood elevation before it could crest into the parking structure. As Dave said, the, your city's municipal code prohibits using dense, sense, sensitive land when determining density calculations. Now, I know that this is something that we're, we're asking you guys to have some flexibility on. If, the rea, the reason is, as we've stated, is we're trying to provide this park, we're trying to provide you guys with a, a beautiful park and provide you some money to help create that park. Now, I want to point out, this area up in here that we're not proposing to pull out the floodplain, these till areas, those are beautiful trees along the river. We've had an arborist out there, most of those trees will stay, will clear out the underbrush. I don't know if anyone's ever been to Highland Glen Park in, in Highland? Picture trails through the trees, hammock poles in the trees, picnic tables, there's the most amazing natural shade there already. In order to bring that property out of the floodplain would only kill those trees, and obviously, none of us wants that. So from a practical standpoint, we think it makes sense to not pull that property out of the floodplain. But in order for us to maximize what we can offer the city to help construct this park, we do need the city to make an exception and grant us the density for that hundred-year floodplain, not the floodway, just the floodplain. I want to also add that we have provided the city with a development agreement that essentially proposes these, these adjustments for this project. Now, it's the city's, it's your decision whether you guys want to accept development agreements or not. They're totally acceptable by state law. You guys get to decide, if you guys want this park and like this park, then we're, we're trying to provide a path, pathway forward where we can offer it to you. Those are the things we've asked for and how we can make that happen. That's essentially like everything I have for you tonight. I would love to answer questions, things. I have a whole bunch of experts here that can answer things better than myself if we have specific questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions for the applicant before we go into public hearing?
Again, I have a bunch, but I want to hear the public.
Perfect. We'll have some, we might call you back up after some questions.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I entertain a motion to go into public hearing for this item.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Cardon. All in favor to go into public hearing for this item, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearings, please come up to the mic and introduce yourself and, yes.
My name is Brent McKell. I own property just to the, adjacent to this project and to the east, if you could bring up the, maybe, that's, that's pretty good representation. I, I've got a couple of, of issues. I'm really not opposed to the development, but I do have two concerns. My first concern, and I'll give you a little history here. On June sixth of July two thousand and ten, I ass, I signed an easement and development agreement with Spanish Fork City relating to the Spanish Fork River Trail Project. Section four of this agreement reads in part, "In order to mitigate against the substantial severance damages to be otherwise incurred by owner for the negative effect of bisecting owner's property and creating virtually landlocked west parcels because of the easement, city hereby covenants with owner to require that any development of real property adjacent to the west of either the, the west parcels tie into and provide sufficient vehicular access to allow the development of owner's western parcels in accordance with city's development standards in place at the time owner desires to development." I believe that the Trails on Main project as presented violates this agreement. The second point I'd like to make regards to developer's presentation regarding the location of the trail system in relation to this development. I believe the presentation implies that the trail will be integrated with and accessible from his development. I don't know, a, as you can see from the property lines, the trail does not run through the Trails on Main development, at least adjacent to it. It is across the river, but the only, the only trail access for this development would be a small section by the The rest of the trail is on my property. We'll give you a better picture so I know what we're talking about. I know from his presentation, he had a couple of, of points showing trail access, but I don't, I don't believe he has those. There, there, he would certainly have access at the point by the bridge, but I don't think he has access anywhere else along his development. Those are my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. McKell. Anyone else?
Well, they had a meeting with this fellow with the planning and zoning.
Say your name for Shelley to get it down.
Oh, my name is Barbara McKell.
Thank you, Barbara.
I also own property over there, and I do own some that's even on the other side where their development will be. And they're, they're making it sound like they're going to donate this wonderful park along the river, but they're donating other people's property for this, so it's kind of hilarious. And I, I also own some other properties that have parking problems. And to go with the lesser thing would not be good because I, in every one of those places that I own, they're always having parking problems because what happens is that people put their, their storage stuff in their garage, and so they have all their cars out, so going with a lesser amount of parking stalls would be not good because it always happens, they put their stuff in the garages, and there's not enough parking, and it causes a lot of problems. But the main reason I'm here is because I don't really want him, them to come and, and donate our, our fields to the park, so, thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Hi, my name's, uh, Michael Larson, so, I'm speaking of the River Trail. Uh, my sister and her kids were in town from Houston the other day, and they just love the trail that there's an actual place that the family can walk. Cause they don't have that in the big cities. And the River Trail is, it's perfect. Because you can walk down it, I, besides the drama with the river lately, I don't know if we've actually gone on the east side of Main Street, there's a pair of great horned owls that are always up there roosting. There's the hawks, there's just the wildlife that's everywhere. And that's the, that's the best part, that you can get kind of out of the city and just take a few steps under a bridge and you're out in, in nature. Um, and then if you keep going down there, there's the fjord horses, and one of them just had a baby a few weeks ago. So there's stuff that kids and families can go do and just see beautiful stuff. And then we have the, the new wedding reception places. That's a pretty nice spot for new couples. You have a beautiful view of the mountains. And then, um, we have the new rec center that's coming around. I know a lot of people weren't excited for that, but I think that's, I think it's pretty great for families and kids. Cause instead of going to Provo, which a lot of people do, we can now stay in Spanish Fork. It's just all, the whole south part of Main Street in Spanish Fork, it's almost family oriented, right? It's all, it's, it's what Spanish Fork is. Um, the practices at the ballparks, the games, the tournaments. Then we have the entire month of July, which is Fiesta Days. Seems like something is always going on for families. It's really, that's the best part of Spanish Fork, is the demolition derbies, the rodeos, the family stuff. It's, it's the culture here, it's what people love. Um, and then I see the big apartment complex. That's not really Spanish Fork culture at all. That's Provo BYU housing, that's Orem UVU housing, that's Vineyard. If you've tried to park in Vineyard anytime recently, no. You're not hanging out with your friends in Vineyard, no. Um, and it's, it's basically every other unrecognizable city that's north of Spanish Fork is what that apartment complex is. There's nothing distinguishable about that. Doesn't set anything apart, it destroys the family culture. The traffic is already horrible right through there. There's, it's, it's so bad. I know there's the new Salem corridor that's gonna go down that might ease that a little bit, but people are old school. They still are gonna go down Main Street. Um, with the construction that's gonna bring, the in and out, and then once it is built, the people, it's apartments, they're gonna keep moving in. There's gonna be moving trucks every day for six hundred plus people living in that small space. There's only one gas station, the dugout, that's around there. There's only one grocery store, Stokes', which is, Stokes has wasps brain next to cottage cheese. It's a little place, so. Like, where, where are these people gonna go for goods, right? And then also, just the waste, the sewer, which you kind of talked about, which I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. And then, they're just the waste from people, and then the dogs. People don't clean up after their dogs, people in apartments bring dogs. It's just gonna make a mess of everything, so. The stress of humans living on top of each other, the lack of commodities, the parking, the traffic, it's just, it's gonna kind of kill what South Main Street is, a big family bubble. And it's gonna destroy what Spanish Fork culture is. And, and it's, it's not what we want, it's not what people want, why we move here. If you wanna make townhomes or something there, great, but not stacks and stacks and stacks of humans. That is not healthy for anybody, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Anyone else?
Mayor, if you indulge me for thirty seconds, I missed the public comments as well.
Tell, tell Shelley your name, so you.
Andrew Kelly is my name. I got to meet, uh, this wonderful young lady on the weekend that's, uh, working on the beautiful garden boxes out here. And I asked her, I said, "How is it that they stay so beautiful all summer long?" I says, "They're like a whole team of people doing this, you know, can we volunteer?" She goes, "No, no, I check on it all the time." How, you know, when it needs to be watered, when I said, so. I don't know if she's Parks Department or Department of City Beautifying, but, uh, actually, she may not be, is that Parks Department? Yeah, cause I said to her, I said, "You know, we have the most beautiful parks in the city, but isn't it ironic that the Parks Department building has overgrown hedges?" And she kind of rolled her eyes. So anyway, she's, she's definitely employee of the month candidate. So I recently got in the post, like you, like many of you did, a, um, little advertisement from Comcast. And I looked at it and it said, "We can give you seventy-five megabits per second download speed." And I kind of had a chuckle to myself. And I thought, "Is this like really old or something, or?" And then I realized, "No, no, this is current," and I thought, "You know what? This is kind of what I'm seeing going on in the city." These companies are completely, they're disconnected from Spanish Fork. We have SFCN, why on earth would I consider that? Like, I've said to my family, Comcast could offer it for free for life, I would not leave SFCN. So when I see something that a developer is not just doing cookie cutter, um, or in our, I may be slightly off on this, but our three hundred and first car wash that's gonna go on my, on my beloved Main Street, another car wash, when I see all this cookie cutter stuff happening all the time, and then I have a developer like this that seems like they really care about the city, they wanna do something beautiful, um, other than the city doing something beautiful, like this building and the building next door, I think it should be encouraged. Um, I think that's why it may not be perfect. As you know, we have extremely professional and proficient city stuff. Their comments obviously are valid and much more educated than mine, but I mean, we're kind of good on chicken restaurants and car washes, right? Like, this is a beautiful option, in my opinion, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Anyone else?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Emily Peterson. So I just, a few of my concerns is, um, we already have several, um, other large developments coming in, not necessarily rentals, but, um, I'm afraid if you bring in this large, uh, rental, um, development, that can also drive down prices of, of the developments that are still coming in, they're not even fully built. Um, I, I think it's just gonna drive down the prices there. Um, and, um, and I think, I don't know if it was Modera, but they were already worried that they weren't gonna have enough people to buy their condominiums, and they wanted to change rentals because the market is not so good. Um, anyway, so I'm just worried about what that's gonna do to, uh, market values. I, I really, I remember when the small Walmart went in and they promised that they would do, um, I think they called it like a dark sky, um, lighting system. And I love that, and I, I think if, if more developments go in, I would appreciate that. Cause here we have, in, in, uh, Highway six, we have the little Walmart with the dark sky, and then kitty corner, we have the Holiday World that's lit up like, Las Vegas, but, um, I would love to see more dark sky if it's gonna be in the river bottoms to kind of, I don't know if it would have helped the Firefly situation down there or not, but, um, and then if we are gonna get this wonderful, wonderful park they're gonna develop, then where the people that are gonna use it supposed to park to use it, if there's already limited parking. So, those are just a few thoughts.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, discussion back up here with questions.
Shane, you wanna, oh, sorry. No, go for it.
Shane's got a three-page here, so.
Chad's got one.
Processing.
Go ahead, Councilman Argyle.
Brent, um, so when you say he, he has access at the bridge, are you talking here? Come up to the mic, please, sorry. Or are you talking back?
I, I've, I've, I've walked that trail a number of times. I, I have access to, 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 to both sides of the trail, I actually, um.
This, this is your, this is your property.
That's my property right there.
But you're saying he has access here at the bridge?
I, I believe there's a gate on that corner of his property, and it's right across from the bridge.
Okay, and then this down here, i- i- is it on your property here too?
I don't believe his prop, at least the fence is, is on the west side of the fence along the trail.
So when you say the agreement that you had is to provide automobile access?
Correct. I'll read it for you again if you'd like.
Please. To where, Brent? To, to this triangle piece?
Or to your?
To, to both pieces, there's, I don't know if I can get this to work.
Push that top button and just hold it for a minute, and it should engage, there you go.
Is that, that the piece? Where that arrow is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I actually have property, so this is my property here, and then it narrows right there, that's, that's where I'm saying I don't believe he has his property touch. It may come right to the edge of the trail, but that's it. And then I own this property right here also, so I have property all, all along the trail. And to give you a little history, there was a development that was going to go in here. This developer came to me and said, "Give me this property, or I will landlock you and make your property worthless." And so, then two thousand and eight came around, and the, and the housing market crashed, and his develop never went in, development never went in. So when the city came to me and said, "We wanna put a trail up along your property," I said, "The only way that trail is going in is if I have an easement into my property." Because, just like this development, he makes my property worthless. And, and if I got the, and if I interpreted the floodplain, right, this property right here is out, is not in the hundred-year floodplain. If I interpreted the, the, the overhead that we witnessed, so that property is potentially quite valuable, and in fact, the developer said he is gonna donate a park that's worth, six acres worth three million dollars. Would this property and this property be any less valuable than his, than his park in here? That, that's what I am up against.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCall. Does that have any questions?
Thanks.
Okay.
Any questions?
I have a question for Dave. Um, so with the six acre park, I believe that's what it was, six acres, six point two, how much of the development would change if we didn't have that and he would have to provide for amenities if it was an R four? Does that, my question make sense?
It does, um.
Cause it doesn't, it doesn't look like it meets the R four zoning with the current amenities that are there. And maybe I'm off on just what I'm doing.
I'd be happy to look into that for you. As best I can, you know, that's, uh, not the best answer, but I'd be happy to look into that for you. I believe that the applicant wouldn't have a problem being able to provide the number of pavilions, playgrounds, and different things like that.
With what's currently there?
If the council were inclined to approve the R four zone, if they, they complied in that regard, I can't imagine that would be a concern.
Okay.
That's, um, but nonetheless, that's something we certainly can look into. Yeah, thank you.
That's one of my questions too, is the park a requirement of our ordinance, or is it sort of the applicant going above and beyond?
It's both. So in the R four zone, thirty percent of the project area has to be open space. So, you know, by way of kind of some of the things that we parsed out of the equation, take out maybe at least the floodway from that, uh, and so forth. Six acres of the park, or six acres of the site certainly would, would go a long ways towards satisfying that requirement and then some, but also some of that six acres would be needed to, to meet that minimum thirty percent threshold.
But with the parking, it almost seems like it would offset that, cause that parking overlay makes it pretty unusable. When we, the two point five parking spots is what I'm talking about, sorry.
Certainly, yes, and that, that, I think, uh, kind of upends the proposal's ability to meet that thirty percent.
Thank you.
You know, like usable open space landscaping requirement.
You remove the parking up, you lose the parking.
Which incidentally, um, that is the challenge that applicants are having in meeting the requirements of the R four zone. Uh, we've seen one project approved in the R four zone that was above nineteen units to the acre, and in that case, the applicant was given the ability to get some credit, uh, to use kind of a mixed-use environment to satisfy part of, part of their parking requirement. But for that, I don't think many applicants will be able to get to a full twenty units per acre, and it's the balance between the parking that ends up most of the time being largely surface parking and that thirty percent open space requirement.
And for clarification, Dave, we are talking the underground parking is, is parking, is those stalls, right?
And in this case, uh, we've, um, taken the position that that satisfies the requirement to have garage spaces, the, yeah, under the building parking.
So, on that note, I've got some questions for the applicants. With the underground parking, you say it'd be a foot above flood elevation?
No, the underground parking itself is below the floodplain, the entrance to the, to the garage is two feet above.
Have you, are you, I guess, another question, are you currently the property owners?
No, we have the property under contract.
Have you discussed or talked with the property owner, and have you gone out and actually dug any holes on the property?
Yeah, we've done a sales report on the property, full geotech.
How deep did you get before you hit water?
It's usually, depends on where you're at, seven to nine feet.
How deep would you need to go for parking?
For the parking? Do you know how deep the parking is, Jake? Three feet. Three feet, it's only going three feet into the native soil for the parking garage, correct?
Um, another question while you're up.
Sure.
What's the process to get property pulled out of the floodplain? How, explain that to me, because that, that seems a little, you just file an application, say, "We're gonna build the homes," and then?
It depends on, it depends on how you're doing it, so we met with Travis, your floodplain, uh,
Manager.
Manager, flood, it's a difficult word, right, floodplain manager. He, he wants a cool title like the river guys. Um, so, he kind of gave us a direction on how, on how he would like to see us proceed. We talked about a couple different strategies and, and within FEMA's processes, so essentially, what he asked us to do is, is to go this clomer F route. So the engineers have done an entire study that says if we pull this out of the floodplain, how's it going to affect the rest of the floodplain, because if you pull some of it out, it might raise others. So the study, uh, showed that it would raise the floodplain in this general vicinity, the rest of it, two inches. So they provide those studies and, and proposals over to FEMA. And Travis and FEMA go through a, a process, and FEMA, uh, either, you know, they give you a permit basically, if you meet their criteria. And so that's what we've done, we've spoken with FEMA, spoken with, uh, you know, the, the engineers that are experts at this have kind of set this up with Travis, and then submitted it to Travis, and Travis actually had, uh, Bowen and Collins do a, uh, a review of what we've submitted as well as part of our submittal process, and they didn't have any red lines for us. We still need to get that approved, and, and then also procedurally, they'll come do, what, what we proposed is that the, that main grade of the floor is gonna be at that elevation, the six feet above the floodplain. So then, when it's built, FEMA will verify that we built it to the standards that they approved, and if they didn't, if we didn't, then we have a problem. If we did, then they, then, then that clomer, the conditional letter of map revision becomes a letter of map revision, and they revise the map, revise the map.
So if you didn't, if you build it and you didn't, that's a big problem, right?
I, I assume you'd have to find us all in Mexico somewhere.
So, back to the holes. So back to the holes, when, when did you dig those holes?
Uh, last year, I think.
A year ago? Any idea where it's at today?
Not for sure, no. There is a, a red line comment, um, from the city engineer that we retest those, those holes prior, prior to, uh, submitting our construction drawings. That'll be part of that process.
I think this week would be a good week to retest those holes. Thank you.
You bet.
Anything else?
Yeah, a couple things. Probably less questions and more just philosophy about this. Um, it's, it's, it's coming down to, maybe from Dell. Dell, do we want to park here?
Yeah, I'm never gonna turn down open space. The cost of the park definitely is gonna be a concern. Um, and we have another piece of property, uh, just north of here that I discussed with these guys as well that this park would tie into that's going to be a park as well.
Okay. There's a decent list of technicalities or technical things that need to be overcome. The sewer, the floodplain, access to the property owners to the east. I think all of those over time can get resolved and, but, but what I don't want to, I, I don't wanna vote on this tonight. I wanna push it off to another day where there's more of these issues that we can resolve. But what I, what I wanna make sure that we give the applicants some good direction. Because I don't want them to go do the work and then have come back and we say no. So what would it take for us to be okay? Do we want to park here? It looks like a great idea. Do we want a development that looks like this here on Main Street, on this location? Do we want density here? I think that's something we should, we should know before these guys walk away. I personally think this is a great place for density and has access to the road in our community. Like if you're gonna put density on a road, this is a place to do it. It won't, you won't be able to tell from a traffic perspective that there's this dense community there. I mean, it's two hundred and eighty units. It's not, you're not gonna see a flood of people exiting this every morning and come back in the afternoon. So I don't, this road can handle this. It has really good access to the interstate right here, just down the road, take a left and you're on I fifteen. So I think this is a pretty good spot. I think transit will eventually be in this, in this vicinity. So it seems like a good spot for density. So that's good. What is it, what does that density have to look like to get a park in this location? Cause I think it's a valuable piece of property to put a park on. Not barring, you know, getting through, getting the conversation when the McKells, you know, dawn and have access to the trail, what a great place to have access to the rail. Park in there, do some piqueting, get on the, get on the trail. We don't have that anywhere. So I like that. I like the overall philosophy of it. There's some technicalities we need to jump through. I think two point five is overparked for this particular type of development. I don't think we need two point five for a studio, a one bedroom, a two bedroom. Well, probably two bedroom on, probably maybe, but it could be lower. So I'm not really overly concerned about the parking. There needs to be more, but I think we can get there. So I think from my perspective, I would want to know from the council, are we comfortable with this type of thing here if these other issues can be overcome? If we're not, that's totally fine. Let's give them that direction and they can stop beating their head against this, this widget and move on. So I like the idea. I like the concept a lot. Those issues that Dave brought up are a concern and we need to figure them out. And if, if we can get to, uh, it makes sense to figure them out, then I think we should give the direction of the developer or the applicant to go do that. If you don't like it, let's tell them. That's my soapbox. Jesse, you look at me like you have serious concerns in your eyes.
I've lost the thoughts. I'm thinking how to, where I wanna go. So perfect.
I'll take a turn. I haven't. I think I'll be the first to say, to really not ask questions. I think everyone's asked the questions. I honestly don't know for me if it's the time and the place right now. We're starting a general plan with the entire city later this summer. It's going to take a year. We don't really have a vision for what we want here and it, it could change. Um, and someone said maybe this is too high dense, high in density, maybe we want townhomes. I don't know what we want. I think this development looks like a good idea. I don't know if it's here. The parking, contrary to Shane, I, it does worry me. We have many other problem areas in the community where there's parking all over the streets. And I would hate to get it developed and then have problems. Cause at that point, there's not a darn thing we can do. And then it does weigh hea- heavy, I should, you know, it, it weighs on my mind when DRC and the commissioners unanimously told, you know, recommended that we deny it. They, they really studied it out. I, I watched the planning and zoning commissioners go through the questions and, and read all the notes. And I know you guys have spent a lot of time. And maybe you could come back after our general plan of the city and, and maybe we would be more for it. After taking care of all these other details, there's, there's so many things that are causing me some angst that I, I'm not ready to approve it tonight and I would hate to say, "Keep going." And, and you guys come back with some changes and me still say, "No." So I think I'm more against it right now.
I'll share my opinion. As far as what you're trying to do with your development, with housing and everything, I think that's great. As far as this location goes, I don't like this location, not only for your development, for, but for any residential at all. That would be for single family homes as well. I don't love this location because of, one, how close it is to the floodplain, how close it is to the river. I live somewhat close to the river and I've got neighbors right now that are dealing with lots of water in their basements. So that, that's a major concern for me, especially to try and put four story buildings with underground parking in this specific location. So it's not just your development, but it's residential altogether. I don't feel like is, is, this is a good place for it. Yeah.
I'd like to respond to, just to what you said about the floodplain part. So right now, we just saw, we're going through the most water we've had in a long, long time or ever, maybe, right? And the river's expected to peak at twenty-three hundred cubic feet per second. Is that right?
Could be.
Could be.
Expected.
We're not far off.
For this property to flood the banks, for the river to flood the banks onto this property, you have to hit thirty-seven hundred and fifty cubic feet per second.
Which is the same as the homes in my neighborhood for the, uh, river to actually overflow. Not talking about the river flooding, I'm talking about the groundwater coming out.
Okay.
I think it's important to understand as well, cause it's, it's a very, very valid concern.
Yeah.
And insurability for the whole project will rely on that.
Travis, does that, can you come to the mic?
It's, I, I agree with you. Insurability for the entire project from an underwriter's perspective would have your concern tenexed, right? The liver, living portion of this project is two feet above Main Street. The, the concrete shell that is down there with sump pump systems there for emergency situations res- resolve any damages per se that happen to residential structures. Uh, the living residents being above that by ten feet of where the garage is plus actually, um, is gonna mitigate that concern, but it's, it's an incredibly valid concern. I believe that the understanding of how that construction occurs mitigates it. In response to the parking concern, which I completely understand as well, I've done over a thousand units throughout Utah and Salt Lake counties, where cities required us to do garages. And I can completely understand why until Barbara, your, is it Barbara? Is your son Mike or relative Mike? Phenomenal legislation this last session, so thank you. It's on public record. He did a great job with some good legislation this session. Anyway, um, garages are storage units. And it's so frustrating cause you can't manage, when someone closes their door, you can't go in and force and pull their stuff out. It's specifically why we designed a plan, which has been seen with garages, to try and meet code. And it just fills up the parking, which makes alleyways and closes off things and takes the openness out. And then we know that the tenants will use them as storage. And therefore parking becomes a massive issue. An underground parking garage is completely open. You go down there, someone's stuff's not gonna be sitting in their parking space. But we also did implement, because storage units are somewhat of an eyesore, however desperately needed, we have storage units built into the underground structures as well that tenants can use where it wasn't feasible to have, uh, appropriate parking. We're actually building out storage units down there that can be utilized by tenants. So that we're not gonna have stuff in the wrong places and parking spaces will have cars in them. Which means that our ratios will be much better and much more utilized than a garage parked, uh, complex. Thank you.
Thank you. Travis McCord? Yeah, I'll go. Um, so just a few things that, that are on my list of maybe concerns or, or items to maybe talk about. Parking is obviously on there. Um, I think this also goes back to, we need to really dive into the parking number. Um, we go through this almost with every development that comes across, whether that's more or less, right? I think on both sides of that, that coin. The trail access, um, it does concern me a little bit, um, whether or not there is enough trail access there. I, I don't, I don't have enough information to say, "Yes, there's a ton of trail access" or "No, there's not." The floodplain does worry me a lot. Um, not only because of the river, but because of the groundwater, water. And I, I could've asked, answered Dell's question when you asked it, whether or not he wanted to park there.
Sure.
Dell's never gonna turn down a park. But, um, I think that that goes to our general plan question is, is that a great place for a park? Is that where we want it? I think those are some of the questions that we need to be asking. And then to what Stacy said is, as we go into this general plan, um, and as we're kind of rolling into the, the river bottoms, it's really important that we focus on these areas to make sure that we know what we want there. I don't, I don't know if I follow where Kevin's at with no housing, but I don't know that it's this. Um, and so for me, it'd be too much to overcome to say, "Hey developers, keep working on this." I think we'd be sending you, I'd be sending you a mixed message at this point. Cause right now I'm not ready to make that, that kind of commitment.
Just going to do just a quick what if. So if, if they came back with a lower, the density that matched an R four, which would be a hundred units less, their parking would meet, the density would meet. Are you a no?
So I think that one of my major concerns still about the park would still be there. And so today I'd still be a no.
Okay, that's, and, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm just like, cause Kevin's like, "No residential" and I respect that that's his view there. And that's, that's what I wanna get out of us tonight is some good, clear direction. And if that's, that's his stance, that's fine. I, I don't want us to use, I mean frankly, the way that we just got described on the floodplain, it's not an issue. Residents will not be impacted. Their cars may be flooded, but if they pulled them out, they wouldn't be flooded. This, this mitigates that, this offsets that. This is not a house along the riverbank that we have today that we've approved, that council has approved. So I think we can mitigate our way out of that. I think most of these technicalities we can mitigate our way out of. But if we are not comfortable with an R four here, we need to be upfront. And you, and I appreciate you saying, "No."
That's right.
And Kevin, you are, you're negative.
He's a negative, no.
Totally.
No R one fifteen either.
Not just for that either. Michael Larson brought up a good point and this is one of the reasons why I like, I like this area. And I think it's one of the major draws to our river trail is I think people get on the river trail to escape everything. It's, it's a quiet place. It's a place full of nature. It's a place where you can really meditate and enjoy being outside. And personally, I, cause I, I walk, I bike this trail. I know exactly the property and the location. And I've thought about, you guys, you've been working on this for a long time. Cause I was on the planning commission when I first saw this presentation. And when you presented it then, I went and walked the trail and imagined what that would look like as I come around the corner. And for me, it's not what I wanna see on the trail. I don't want the trail to be, and maybe I need to go to Boise to see what it's like, but I don't want the trail to be covered or full of people nonstop, right? I want it to be kind of what it is today, just a quiet place to be able to go and enjoy. And I don't know if adding a park right there now is gonna bring that many more people and put them on the trail or not. I don't know, but I like the trail as it is right now.
I think there's some good points of, that have been made here, some great questions been asked by residents that you can tell just love this area as, as much as, you know, as much as everybody up here. I, I, I think, I think discussions, uh, from, from developers that are going to develop properties with a for rent product and say a percentage of that is being set aside for future homeownership, I think that's the way we help some of the housing problem in, in our state. So, so I like ideas like that. I, I think, I think there's issues with neighboring property owners that would have to be figured out for, again, and I don't vote, but for, for me to be very comfortable with this, it would have to be kind of cleaned up that way with, with lines and properties of, of what could be included as, as parks and everything. And so I don't know, I don't know if those numbers work out after that for what you'd need for density to be able to rent, uh, the, the project. Yeah.
For reference on that, and I, I respect Mr. McKell, Ms. McKell being here. Our, the boundaries that we're showing on all our stuff are the surveyed boundaries. It looks to me like the point of that trail touches, or the point of the property touches the trail there. But if it doesn't, we won't access it there. It's not, you know, some of our design and stuff shows trees all along the river and some of that is on Mr. McKell's property. But we're not proposing to dedicate any of that or do anything with that to the city. We're simply illustrating what this area looks like with those exhibits.
That's good clarification. I think the part that, uh, that I'd like to discuss as a council more is, it, it is going to involve the public quite a bit for our general plan discussion this, this fall. Uh, or hopefully late summer. And, and I think part of it is if something's here, then it should be connecting over to the river and over to an area that all of a sudden now you're across the river. And, and what does across the river look like? If I'm a landowner across the river and I'm looking through trees at this complex or something being built here, I'm probably a landowner saying, "Well, what am I doing across the river? Do, do I do the same thing? Do I do it different?" "No, you don't have a road to Main Street." "Well, let's build a road to Main Street or let's improve the road to Main Street," right? And there's discussions over there that I think we'd have to have as kind of a large, just a larger area than just your specific area. Shane uses the word one-off sometimes and this would feel a little bit one-off.
You're surprised I've said that.
Yeah, I was surprised you hadn't thought of it, yeah. But, but, but one-off in that it is so closely connected to getting across the river and the trail of, of people seeing what's over there. And if I'm a landowner, I, I might think I wanna do something here.
Mayor, I got one more question for the applicants. Suppose we did approve this tonight. One thing that I guess really hasn't been discussed yet is what would you do as far as tying into the sewer? That's one of the findings and we've not heard and answered that.
There's a lot of options to tie into the sewer. It's not totally defined yet what those will be. We've shown on our preliminary plat, a couple of different options. We've talked, been speaking to the McKell family, speaking to Mike McKell to see if there's any way we can work together to go across there. That would be a clean option. We have no agreements with them. Just discussions. There's a, an option that could run the same type of infrastructure to go straight under Main Street, straight north. There's another option to increase the size of a sewer line, um, on the opposite side of the road where Sky Meadows, where Quick Quack and everything are connecting in. There's a, there's a couple of bottlenecks there. There'd need to be some studies done as to what it would take to reading, uh, to eliminate those bottlenecks. I think there's about four hundred feet of asphalt that has an eight inch sewer line that would need upgraded. And then there's, um, and then depending on what the sewer study showed, uh, the, uh, skipping my mind, where it, where it goes under the river might need some upgrade too. Siphon, that's right. Siphon could potentially need some upgrades and things like that. But most of that property, most of that wouldn't require, uh, just there's that four hundred feet or so that's in a roadway. So there's a lot of options. These to us are construction drawing type options. And I don't think that there's any exposure to the city in approving a, a plan with those. Every single plan you approve at preliminary stage has construction things that still need resolved. So, and they don't get resolved without the study on that. And then you figure out, and we're required to bond for all, we're required to resolve that, get it approved by you and bond for those improvements before it can take place. The city has a whole lot of control over how that happens on the final plan, construction drawings.
Thank you. Which, from the things you described, sounds like could get a little expensive.
Exactly.
If you're boring under Main Street, if you're going under a river, whatever you're doing is gonna cost some money. Would you be able to do those things if there were reduced density to your proposal?
I mean, these are all questions I wouldn't know how to answer right now. The reason that the proposal has the maxed out density right now is The reason that the proposal has the maxed out density right now is because we're trying to maximize the park space. Okay, and the contribution aside, along with that. I'll tell you this, we could, we can meet the whole two point five stalls. It's no more expensive for us to put two point five stalls per unit on this project. No more. We're doing that instead of paying for landscaping. Okay, it's very similar. We just think it's a more beautiful project in how it's proposed. But if the city says, hey, we're good with this, but you need to put the two point five stalls, we might shed a few tears, but we're gonna do it. I mean, that that's not a deal breaker for us. We just think it's a better project how it is. But you guys are the decision makers, and our goal tonight was to get this in front of you and say, hey, look, we're asking for some things that you don't typically do. They're not your standard. Here's why. We think it's beautiful. We think it's amazing. Can you get on board with these things for what we're offering in return?
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm I'm glad it it's finally to this point where we could talk about it. It the process is very, still not sold on how we do this, right? There's a lot of investment on these guys' point to get to here. And we could have had this conversation before you invest a bunch of money and and like philosophically, could we get here? And it's not sounding like there's a ton of support there. And I understand why. I'm not trying to question any, all of your comments. Like, that's what we need to do up here. We need to debate stuff like this and talk about it in a big, big way. This is a, this is a major thing for Spanish Fork, to your point. It may not be the right place. We do one hundred percent need to get to this parking issue, because when we move out into those more dense, where we are, we are going to have more dense places than than twenty. We're going to have potentially a front runner stop that we are, we need more than twenty units per the acre. And no one's going to be able to meet a two point five unit stalls per unit on thirty five units per the acre. You're just, it's a parking lot forever, and that's not what we want. So we need to get to there, and maybe this helps push us there. But I like the philosophy a lot. I like the, I like the donation. I like the park. I think it enhances us quite a bit. I'm respectful that that this might not be the spot for it. But let's make sure we articulate to these guys so they stop investing if that's not going to work.
May I respond one more time?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Two, two Kevin's comments. What what exactly do you envision going in here? Because something will go in there. Currently, like if you're running on that trail, if it's the back of a commercial building, is that the other potential option right now that someone could propose and?
When, yeah, possibly. I mean, when I hear that you're going to be two feet above Main Street and then going four stories above that, that that worries me. That's not, so I I don't know what I want to see, but I know what I don't want to see.
I I completely respect that. From the trail, what you're experiencing is wilderness. You're so offset from that with six acres of open space.
You can see the barn from the trail.
You you absolutely can. There'll be far more amenity. And again, it could very likely just be the back of a commercial and no park as well. And so I I just want to make sure we, I I understand.
No, and I I respect that. You want to make sure that, know that something will be there, right? It's not going to stay open nature, whatever, forever, right? Something, property owners have the ability to to sell it, and the developers have the ability to develop it. I understand that. I just know what I, I do not want to see there.
When I'm on a trail, I totally understand when I'm on a trail what I like to see. I respect that. I just, it it's right in the middle of the city on Main Street.
Yeah, and that's, that's a secondary concern. That's, again, that's a secondary concern for me. My main concern is obviously the floodplain. And I do worry about the water.
I think we've adequately resolved that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Argab?
Yeah, I just, so first of all, I I want to express, so I have complete respect for our plan and commission and our development review committee, because they're they're asking us to deny it for these reasons. R four, I don't have a problem with the density R four, which that's maximum is twenty though, but we're not there if we don't have. I have the same concerns that Kevin do with the floodplain. The parking part, I'm always, I just spent this last week with two residents concerning parking. And what Shane says is true. I, when when you get to thirty to forty an acre or stuff like that, we're we're not going to be able to have a parking lot the size to take care of the cars. But then I don't know that if we're next to a tracks or or public transportation, they're going to need to have three, four cars. And that's something that absolutely we need to talk about. I worry about the access to McKell's property, because he's right. That's my property. It's worth, we don't want to take that away from him. But I do, in eighty four, you said, you know, may maybe it would never happen. But in eighty four, we were fortunate enough to have a mudslide that pushed down in front of the river and became actually a mitigation problem for a little while. Had all that water come down, and that had not happened, I sat and watched it tear down railroads, bridges and everything down there as it went through some of that property up there in Thistle and Spanish Fork. That devastation didn't make it all the way down here because of that bridge. I'm not thinking we're going to see it happen this time, because our weather's planning, or being nice to us. But I guess we'll see what happens. But the the floodplain worries me, especially when you don't have that, even though you're going to mitigate that. I guess when they say that, I guess then maybe I would listen a little more to that, but that worries me, what's there. Watching what we've done and what we've, we need to be better at the river mitigation ourselves. But these people, where Kevin lives, in eighty four was completely underwater, so. And that changes. We've gone, what, twenty years, not had snowstorm, and then we get it. The utilities, all all four of those things that the the planning and zoning, or the planning commission and the development review, I I have to stand by them a little bit and say no, because there there's so many, I mean, the list here is pretty long of the issues that need to be resolved, in my opinion, before I consider it. I'm not, I probably don't have a problem with the R four zoning. I don't, I don't. I maybe have a problem with where it's at. It worries me with the flood zone if we build something. The park part, when you guys first proposed this, I loved that, the the part of it. But after me thinking and learning, and it's been a year since that, I wonder if our residents would be intimidated by coming to and going between the development to get to that park. You know, most of our parks are open and down on on a street. That's kind of behind and hidden. Would they use that? I have a little bit of concern about that. It would be a great amenity, especially to the people that are even there, close access to the trails, if we have access to the trails. But it worries me a little bit behind, being behind four big structures, would they, would our citizens feel comfortable going there? Maybe it would take them some time to go in there. At this time, I don't feel good about where we're at with this.
Thank you, Councilman Argab. I feel like we're 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 getting close to a a motion on this one point that I had to bring up, and and it might not even fit completely with this development. So I feel like it's going a little bit in into the general plan discussion again, where I've been going. But I think, I think we are unique down here in that we're we're so close to outdoor recreation that that even, even our residents that live in in condos or in apartments or or townhomes or something smaller than a single family home here typically do spend the money on some piece of outdoor equipment that's that's more than just a bike. They they are ATV people, they're four wheeler people, they're side by side people, they're boat people. And it's because you you walk out your door and you look at the mountains, you're like, I gotta go there, you know, and and you and you take stuff there. So I think there's some wisdom in talking, especially when we talk about this general plan update coming, that there's some proof of concept parking of of saying, hey, you know, that you're you're showing us some data of what parking is in other places. How's that, how does that work? You know, maybe there's some some land i- in the development that's like, hey, you know, it's here if it's available. If we're underparked here, here's where we go to it. And I think some of that might even be used. Again, I don't know how it'd fit right here, but but some of that might be used for, hey, here's the storage. So you don't have to put it in your garage. You don't have to put it in a, in your place where your car is supposed to go, and now you're taking visitor parking. But but it's your place where your side by side can go, or your four wheeler on a trailer or something. I think there's some wisdom in high density developments, talking about where can we put the stuff that that typically South County, Utah County residents like to still have, even though they're they're renting, they're paying your twelve hundred bucks a month in rent or whatever, and then they're paying an eight hundred dollar a month payment on the side by side, because that's, that's what they do. That's what they like to do, and they forego other things for it. So I think there's some wisdom in in conceptually talking about that. And I don't know where it'd fit here, but you have a whole list of concerns. Yeah, yeah.
Frankly, on a project like this, we don't allow that kind of stuff to be parked in there.
Yeah.
You can't have it. You just can't. And these people right now do like that. People do like that kind of stuff. But people have to move far away right now to afford where to live. You guys' kids can't afford to live in Spanish Fork right now. This kind of housing is needed. I'm not saying it's going to be cheap. It's nice. It's beautiful. This kind of housing is desperately needed, because our own kids can't afford to live in our communities. Kids have to go down to Payson or to Santaquin or something like that, and that's the rent place, not the one place.
And I want to be clear, I love your housing. I have no problems with your housing, and we absolutely do need more density. And I've there, I've approved plans in the past that are R four right across the street. That came, that came up. I was one of those that approved that. It's the location.
It's on Main Street where our traffic needs to flow. I get your proximity to the river. There, most of these types of complexes like this get put overlooking a Walmart. You know, overlooking the roof of a Walmart. They don't get to look at a river. If this property's on a river, there's three hundred homes that get to live on a river. If there's something else there, if there's the commercial building, because it's on Main Street, it gets put there. Nobody enjoys that river. You don't, that's what gets put on Main Street, because that's what drives it economically. So I'm going to, you know, you've seen my presentation, and we've said, maybe not now. No, it's not the time. Maybe not now. We've talked about the floodplain. We have solid engineering on the floodplain. Floodplain's not a concern. It might be a concern in your minds, but I'm saying that there's the evidence and the engineering and things in place that can mitigate that with some, you know, that we could provide or or discuss further. Secondly, if you don't approve a project, how many projects have been brought to you? This type of project that are doing what we're doing here? Have you had a lot of these? Fifty percent open space? Parking being put into the buildings? Do you have any parking being put into the buildings in Spanish Fork? It's a big cost. The reason we're willing to spend that cost is because we want to give you this product. So my point to you guys right now is, you don't approve something like this. Now, how many projects are getting brought to you that look like this? And what are you going to get here later if you don't approve this? Is it going to be better than this? Once again, how many projects are being brought to you around the city that look like this?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, appreciate it. More questions or discussion up here, council?
I guess it's a, Juan, what are we going to do? I am with all of you about the three or four items that the the DRC and the planning commission came up with. Those are legitimate concerns that would, I would vote no if it was in front of us today. That does not mean that I don't like the 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 proposal. I think there are some things that need to be overcome. I would propose that we, what are the right words? Table? Punt? Postpone? Is this table? What's the difference between table and, I I guess punt is one of the words that I'm supposed to use?
Punt's in football.
Oh, is that where that comes from?
Tell me all that, Shane.
You you've had the public hearing, which is statutorily required. And so you, you don't want to, you, I think tabling gives you the ability to keep that, having had that, right? And then you can continue.
So what's the difference between table and continue?
Two letters. I'm sorry, I was getting you back.
I appreciate it, two letters. But I am, one, I I would propose instead of saying no and then, I'm not sure what happens at that point. Do they have to reapply and go through the process again? I would rather say, you've heard what we had to say. Let's continue it. If you come back, it's your decision to come back. But you've gone through the process and you come back, and if you want to do that, great. But I don't necessarily want the process to start over again, if if that's possible.
What's the timeline if we continue this?
Yeah, Dave, any thoughts on that? I I think Councilman Marshall's question is is a great one, that you've done the public hearing. So you don't want to have to do that again.
I mean, I wouldn't mind doing it again necessarily, but I mean, there wasn't, you know, I I thought the building was going to be pretty packed, and we were going to hear, do not do this, and we didn't, we heard, we have some concerns, do it right.
Well, and if the if the if the proposal came back and it changed in a substantial way, it might, it might make sense to have another public hearing. Be like, hey, this is a little bit different.
Because the difference between the two would be, right, if we table it, then they just come back here, or they work through city staff to put it back on the output, on the agenda. But if we move to no, then it's they have to go through the process completely? Is that the difference?
They start over, yeah.
Either way?
A continuance is basically a pause so that it can be considered again in a future meeting.
So DRC wouldn't see this again if we tabled it?
No, it's been through that part of the process. Maybe to the city manager's question, and maybe to some questions that I have, before this, unless it were to change significantly, could be considered by the council for approval, as I understand it, just the ordinance being what it is. We would have to have a public hearing scheduled with the planning commission and the city council to consider some kind of zoning text amendments. And those could take a lot of different shapes and forms, like I mentioned, just in terms of the mechanics of things. I'd be interested in any thoughts that you guys have about what we would do beforehand to get things ready for consideration, language drafted and and all of that, if that's a route you want to go.
So for me personally, if we continue, these are two things that I want to figure out or hear from, is FEMA and their decision, what what's the status there, and then the access to the McKell property. Those are my two, two top items.
Mine would be the three findings, right? Sewer, parking, FEMA, which I think you've. FEMA, what's the third? Is that three? That's the third.
Sewer, parking, FEMA.
Yeah, I think that's the step we'd start to take if if, I mean, these would be, these would be text amendments in zone that that would say, okay, now this is applicable in other places, right, setting?
You'd almost have to have them come back with those three things met and and what the impact on the development was. And then if we're like, okay, that's what we want, now how do we make it happen from an ordinance perspective? I think it's hard for me to say, do this on the ordinance without knowing what the ramifications of those three things are. I mean, one option to them is to come back with a hundred less units and meet the ordinance, and we're done.
Here's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing some people, some council people have concerns with different aspects of the design. You know, maybe it is, there's not enough parking. And I'm hearing other council members that don't necessarily want the the design changed a lot. So, you know, by way of it moving forward next, unless I hear something otherwise, my inclination is to work with the applicant to prepare zoning text language and to have a modification on that end be the primary focus, while they work out some things that conceivably don't upend the design. I make those adjustments, and maybe it is now with a, you know, something of a of a green light. They invest the time and effort to figure out the offsite sewer. And we focus on maybe writing a new zoning district that allows for higher density, less parking, et cetera, and some of those kinds of things to remove those obstacles. Am I?
But what if, like, I'm not okay with higher density, going thirty to the unit? And I say, take off the top floor, so we're not.
You should be making a motion before Shane makes a motion.
I know. I'm like, I don't know if, I don't agree with Shane, so.
Yeah, and and I'll be.
That's why there's five of us.
I know.
And I'll be upfront, because Shane Shane's saying, you know, it's, it's what you guys want. Even if I I don't love it, more than likely, I'm going to be a no vote. Even if, even if you come back and you figure out an access for the McKells and whatever, I struggle with with the floodplain. And even if FEMA comes back and says, aye, we can mitigate. I struggle with with the floodplain. And even if FEMA comes back and says, aye, we can mitigate this or whatever, the homes that are flooding in my neighborhood are not in floodplain. They're outside of it, and they're still flooding, so. So just the location is is a big concern for me.
What would the applicant's preference be? Continue or deny?
But I'm just one vote.
We don't ask the.
We ask the applicant all the time.
No, we don't. What do you want us to vote to my?
No, we don't. We don't. Of course, they want us to vote yes.
I'll make the motion. I've never made a motion before, but um, I I, at this point, I'd prefer if we could continue or table or something. I feel like we have some, we can put together some information on some of these concerns that will, at the very least, make a compelling argument to you. Do that. If we don't get anywhere, if we can't get each other on board, then then we know where we're at, but.
So it's not a waste of your time and money going forward with some of these studies?
I've been working on this project for three years, so if I gotta do a little bit more to show you guys that this is a good project, I'm pleased to do that.
My only concern with that, with Shane's option, is there is so much, I won't say disagreement, but differing views on what needs to happen from here to approval, that I almost think that it would need to go before city staff again before it comes back to us. So that's where I would be.
So if I understand that, city staff and the planning commission and their three findings didn't say, we don't think this is the place for this density. We don't think this is the place for this development. We think there's a parking problem, there's a floodplain problem.
Sewer problem.
And there's a sewer problem. So if those three things are checked, what more are they gonna say? Had they said, we don't like this here, I'd have been totally fine with what you just said, but they didn't. So I have to, I look at those findings and say, if those three checkboxes are checked, we have met those two boards.
But we can still, as a council.
We can still one hundred, but one hundred percent, and that's why we're elected.
Right, for sure.
Because we get to say, we don't like it there, and no. So your vote doesn't, I I'm not, I'm not trying to sway any one of you on how to vote on this. I am not.
But I hope we're explaining, we don't like it there because.
Absolutely. Because is a, yes, please follow that up with a because. But that's not what the findings are. So that's why I'm saying if we continue it and those three boxes are checked.
Right.
We should be okay, but.
Yeah, from what from what I'm hearing, three of the five of us aren't okay with our four zone up there. So it would have to be a different zone that would come forth, and it doesn't sound, at least from what I'm hearing, is that something you would be interested in doing, is a different zone?
No.
No, quite frankly, no, because a different zone doesn't, a different zone essentially, I mean, let's say, let's get even simpler. Let's say we keep it in the same zone. Let's say we lop the top off of one of these buildings, both these buildings, right, take a hundred units off. Well, we still had to build the parking garage underneath, so the footprint, all that concrete, that crazy cost to build that parking garage is the same. Now you got a hundred less units. Yeah, you don't need as much parking, but now there's no more, there's no money for the park. Like, the financial, the finances don't work right now, and in the market we're in, building costs, as everybody in this room knows, are crazy high. They haven't come down hardly at all, even with the slowing. Interest rates are crazy high, so now the cost to build and finance a project like this is astronomically higher than it was eight months ago. And so reality is, for any project in any city to work, the finances have to work. And the reason that we've gotten so creative on trying to figure out how to make these this amount of units work in this location is because we're trying to make the finances work so that we can perform on the things we're telling you we'll do.
And and I think that that answers my question, right, is because then for me, I'd be sending them down a path that I'm not gonna end up approving.
Totally understand that. How about how about I make a motion, we vote, I get whatever happens, happens, you all make another motion, and we move forward.
Okay.
One quick question. So our four, they don't meet it right now without the floodplain changing, correct?
And the parking requirement changing.
And the quite, okay, all right.
Can I speak to that real, or actually, what can Tyler speak to that real quick?
All right, you got.
We, my name is Tyler Cahoon, attorney with Dentons, representing the applicant. There's been some representations by staff that we respectfully disagree with, saying there needs to be a text amendment to the ordinance, but the state legislature has already promulgated a statute that addresses this under LUDMA. It's, if you haven't, if you're not familiar with that, it's under chapter ten of the statute. And it gives city councils the ability to be flexible when approving a development. And it's through a development agreement. It's termed a legislative development agreement. And you can, and what a what a legislative development allows the city council to do is approve a development that does not uh, line up with the city ordinance. And that's that development agreement would still be subject to um, a public hearing before the planning commission, and then ultimately uh, before the city council, just like you would, just like you would for an ordinance change, it would it would just go through a loophole under the legislative development agreement. So that would be another option for the council to consider. It wouldn't have to be just a text amendment under the ordinance. You could approve it with conditions under a legislative development agreement under LUDMA, the state statute. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for a a motion on. What's that?
I just wanted to echo that that's that's correct. I mean, if you do a development agreement that's gonna vary from any standard or ordinance, you just run it through the same process of public hearing, planning commission, city council, upgrade the development agreement.
Yeah. Good.
So, is that okay to make a motion? We'll see where it goes.
We're prepared for your motion to see where it goes.
All right. I move that the proposed zone change preliminary plat be continued.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall. Second. You got dies for lack of a second. To entertain a a a motion, uh, something different than the the one that died.
I'll go ahead. I move that the proposed zone change preliminary plat be denied based on the following findings. That the proposal does not conform to the city's parking requirements, that a plan to provide sanitary sewer service to the subject property has not been finalized, and that the city staff is not currently prepared to support a proposal that requires a modification of the floodplain.
Motion made by Councilman Euler. Is there a second? Second. Second by Councilman Carden. Uh, this is a roll call vote. Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
No.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Argo?
Yes.
That passes four to one. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thanks, you guys.
For the details. Thank you for the discussion. Residents, thank you for the public hearing. Appreciate that input. Okay, that takes us, you guys need a break before you go to the next one.
They have worn me out.
I could.
It'd be a good idea. Let's do it.
Let's let's, we're gonna recess for five minutes. Well, let's take a motion to recess for five minutes. Is that okay?
Motion to recess.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, second by uh, Councilwoman Beck for a five-minute recess. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
We'll recess for five minutes.
We might need it.
Okay, welcome back from recess. We're back in city council. The sixteenth of May two thousand twenty-three. We're done with item eight B and now we're on to item eight C of our public hearing agenda. Mr. David Anders.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I mentioned before the meeting that the applicant has requested that this be continued. We've scheduled the public hearing, so some of us talked briefly about the idea of giving a general presentation. It'll be me, try to be a little bit succinct of the nature of the project, where it is at this point, by way of having recommendations from both the planning commission and the development review committee. And the idea that you would take public comment tonight. I mention that for the benefit of folks that have recognized that are here for this item. Are we on the right track with that? Does that sound?
Yeah, yeah, I think so, yes.
Okay, wonderful. This has been discussed quite a bit by the planning commission. We talked about it in a work meeting even previously with the city council, I recall. A handful of different things with this, including both the zoning map amendment, zoning text amendment, and then the actual project approval itself. I'll go ahead and mention just at the onset that another thing that staff has discussed with the applicant, and should ultimately the council want to approve this, we think for more than one reason. This is a situation where a development agreement probably is necessary to simply be able to memorialize some of the details associated with the design of the project. For example, some of the commitments that we've discussed with the applicant relative to improvements that would be required when those improvements would be made, about phasing. And then also different things relative to just the use, whether, for example, maybe it's Plan A, Plan B, some timing things on that. So the recommendation that I'll touch on here in a moment, you know, ultimately would be subject to the applicant entering into a development agreement and a couple of other conditions as well. That all being said, the subject property in this case is located on the northeast corner of four hundred North and Spanish Fort Parkway. It's altogether about a fifteen acre site. A little bit better perspective of it, the legacy. Can't remember if it's the legacy farms, townhomes, or just the legacy townhomes just to the north of it. R one twelve subdivision to the south on the other side of four hundred North. Located at a signalized intersection there, which is what, as we've discussed, this particular site with people that would like to do non-residential development, they like that. They like the proximity to that intersection, being right at it. It's referred to as a hard corner. This is one of a few sites that staff has discussed potentially having something like a grocery store on with brokers that work for both local and national companies that are in that business. So we have some reason to believe that this is a site that conceivably in the marketplace could work to support that type of a business. For that reason, going way back in time, I'll touch on this a few more moments as well. The city has earmarked this property for non-residential development. That being said, I'll start with this again, based on the two findings that we've noted there. In the staff report and staff's recommendation, staff is recommending that the proposed preliminary plat and zone change be approved. The second finding there does relate to a mixed-use zone that does not exist now. That's also on your agenda for tonight, a public hearing for that, to amend the text of Title fifteen. There's a process that that language has to go through. In this case, that mixed-use zone has been reviewed by the DRC and the planning commission, and they've recommended that it be approved. And based on that and the conditions that are noted there, staff brings this before you with a recommendation for approval. Key issues, I'll try to cover these kind of quick, but the need to have that mixed-use zone adopted before really anything else can happen here. An approval could be contingent upon that mixed-use zone being adopted. We've talked a lot about whether or not ultimately a grocery store would be part of the development or not, and some of the different factors that will probably influence that either occurring or not. That ties up into then how much residential development will be here, how much commercial development will be here. Fundamental questions that at different times have kind of gone around in circles with the development agreement. And then just a few, I'm going to call them fairly minor red lines that we expect the applicant to address before this were to move forward. That is before, for example, maybe a development agreement were brought to the council. This is a proposed general plan amendment that happened ten plus years ago. Just an exhibit from what was presented to the council that was in place at that point in time. This happened as part of the Northeast Bench Annexation, really was the genesis of what we're talking about now, having that particular corner designated general commercial on the general plan with the annexation. Then of everything that included legacy farms and some other properties around there. It's called the Northeast Bench Annexation. Zoning was assigned to the subject property that that C two zone is illustrated here. That's just an exhibit from that annexation. And ultimately today, this is, this is the general plan and the designation of the general plan for the subject properties. You can see here that there are a total of four different parcels that comprise the subject property. That's particularly relevant when we look at this. The boundary between the commercial property and what got developed is the townhomes was modified and it actually created a remnant parcel. There's a long story here, but to try to be succinct, we realized after the Northeast Bench Annexation was approved and this much commercial space was identified on the zoning map, what we see there in red, that that was, you know, maybe ninety or a hundred feet too shallow to support, let's say, a sixty thousand square foot grocery store with the kind of parking field that they'd want to have in front of it between that store and the road. So when Salisbury Homes approached us about developing the townhomes to the north, we worked with them and let them consolidate the density of that site on lesser acreage so that this space would be set aside really ultimately for what we're talking about now. The zoning of the property wasn't changed at that time, so it remains today zoned R three, hence one part of the proposal, which is to change the zoning map not only from commercial to mixed use, but also from R three to mixed use, so that everything we're seeing as part of the subject project would be zoned mixed use. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
This is what's proposed. As designed, some of this is more conceptual than other parts of it. The applicant has built structures like this. As I understand it, typically they have built four-story buildings with four units on each floor. As proposed here, they would be three-story buildings with a total of ninety or so units, apartments on the north and east sides of the development. Structure shown here and I'll get to a couple of other images showing just elevations of those buildings. This building is the only structure that's in the proposed project that's intended to actually have residential and non-residential uses co-mingled in the same structure. The building's out along the southern side of the project, four hundred North here. These would be fairly typical commercial strip retail types of spaces. We haven't seen anybody propose buildings like that since COVID that don't have drive-throughs, as proposed these would as well. And there's been some thought given as well to something that might accommodate some type of a drink-serving business as part of the project. As I mentioned a minute ago, I think this because of the applicant's experience and their anxious nature to get started on the residential side of things. It's a given that this happens probably with very little change from what is proposed tonight. I think it's likely that the same can be said for a building that might house the different uses and the strip retail kinds of spaces out here. Very common in the marketplace, hard to imagine something different being built there. But the idea of a grocery store here, even though, you know, we we have it from very reliable sources, that, that, that's realistic. There's no way to compel somebody to get into that business on any particular site. Timing has to be right. You've got to be in a situation, for example, where a company's in a mode of expanding and they're looking for sites to build stores and to expand operations and that type of a thing. Site's got to be right, lots of different things. We were fortunate with the neighborhood Walmart that when they opened, there were a couple of different entities looking at that property. And we probably would have had a different company land there but for the size of the site. It was only big enough to accommodate what, what the Walmart folks wanted to build there. Different factors that could influence somebody deciding to put a grocery store here and not certainly include other companies making a similar investment on a different site in the area. So, you know, should somebody locate another grocery store in some proximity to this site, that probably knocks back the likelihood that something would happen here, at least for some span of time, if not forever. So again, lots of things that are out of any one person's control. And I appreciate that, I feel like the applicant has been pretty upfront about their desire to have a grocery store there. But they've also acknowledged just that that's something they can't guarantee. I mentioned that in particular because that's been the subject of a lot of discussion. To some extent, and I know not everybody feels this way, but for some, the idea of having a grocery store here served more of kind of a local demand for that kind of service in this part of the community, that is such a benefit that that's, at least is viewed as such a benefit, that that is kind of a carrot, if you will, that kind of, I think in some ways, has been dangled out there as a reason to, to consider approving the residential side and some different things like that. Pretty attractive part of the project, at least for some. And another part of, of that unknown with the grocery store has been concerned about, well, what if the property owner, applicant, anybody in the future simply can't make a grocery store work on that site? Those concerns have led to conversations about, well, you know, perhaps we don't want to see the residential use expand. We want to make sure that what's being approved with the proposal now is it in terms of, of the number of residential homes that are part of the project ultimately, which syncs up with the nature of the project's primary zoning today, commercial zoning. And it's partly because of those concerns, or in an effort to, to address those concerns, the applicant has put this together, pretty easily recognizable. Not much is different from what we looked at a moment ago, except that you kind of see something of a Plan B. It might involve more strip retail space and, and similar and different configurations. Maybe freestanding pad for, again, non-residential use out on the corner of Fourth North and, and the Parkway. Maybe some office buildings, but the applicant's prepared to have this included in a development agreement as Plan B, if you will. Any questions about that?
So then it looks like from the findings that the only limitation for the developer is to wait five years. That's it. They don't, if they can't land a grocery store, they just wait five years and then do Plan B. There's no other carrot, there's no other stick other than just don't develop. You still get the residential. You still get to go forward with everything. Just bide your time and you can put two more strip malls in there.
And not do the grocery store.
And not do the grocery store.
And have that change made. Yes, and I think that is certainly something that's worth talking about with the, I think that's something you need to be deliberate about. That notion is something that came out of planning commission conversations. And there were certainly different opinions about how to ensure that the desire to have a grocery store on the property isn't foregone prematurely. And I'm not sure that there's a magic number of years.
I don't agree with it either. I'm just, my tone suggests that I was unhappy with it, I guess, but I'm just trying to clarify.
Right. We haven't, we haven't taken that path with other things in the past. It's a little bit.
The effort by the planning commission, I mean, I don't know how to write that any different, to be honest with you. I'm just making sure that that's, that's what we're talking about. This has been zoned commercial for, or general plan commercial, at least for as long as I can remember.
Yeah.
When I was on the planning commission. And it, it feels like we're sort of stepping back a bit in the hopes that we get what we want. But it makes it, it makes the project viable by doing so potentially, so. It's just, there's trade-offs. There's trade-offs by allowing residential units in the back of a parking lot.
Yeah.
On the five years, just for example, some other things that, that we've thought about. The city waited a lot more than five years for neighborhood Walmart. There are other sites in town that have been zoned commercial for a lot more than twenty years now, where we're waiting for a grocery store.
This is one of them.
Yeah, my, my concern, and I shared it with you, Dave, is you've got this five-year stipulation in here. What happens if across the railroad tracks in Mapleton, somebody decides to buy up some property and put a grocery store there, right, within half a mile or less? Are we now locked down to saying, okay, you still got to wait these five years? When in all reality, now it's going to be even more than that before this would ever get a grocery store.
Reality, if that happens, it never happens.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So do they still have to wait the five years? Or I guess could another city council at that point bring it back up and say, hey, let's remove this?
Yeah, I think an agreement is, is just that. If both parties want to agree to new ter, new terms, I think you can do that. And, and that may be a circumstance where I think you, you can see that. Where the, the equation is significantly changed by some external circumstance. Again, maybe to be kind of quick, I appreciate that the applicant's modified his building design substantially from what we first saw. I mentioned earlier that they've gone from four stories down to three. This has a lot more architectural interest than what we, we worked with originally and what I've, I've seen of the applicant's products in other communities. Really appreciate that, this, this issue was very troubling to start with and they've come a long ways. Again, there's some other perspectives, different things like that. Amenities in the project, they've suggested things like pickleball courts, playground equipment, gathering space that might be open to both patrons of the, you know, businesses on the non-residential side, residents as well of the, the residential side. And yet there are some things like that that we haven't totally ironed out yet by way of, he's going to be responsible for maintenance of different things and the like. I believe the applicant has, has a plan for that, but there are some things that we haven't fully come to understand other than that cross-access easements and different things like that would be in place. This is a situation where it's not uncommon for communities to allow a use like apartments to share parking with a distinct that is a different use, like a restaurant or an office building or that type of a thing. Residential uses require the most parking in the evenings. So I think it's been proven and well documented that allowing for there to be some overlap parking-wise and that type of a thing versus requiring there to be enough parking for each of the different uses to stand on their own is good practice and that indeed is part of the proposed mixed-zone language that's before you also tonight. So that in a nutshell is the proposed Canyon Court project. You've had the memorandum with the language from the proposed mixed-use zone. Planning commission went through that very thoroughly. There are just two things I want to mention about that, and then I'd be happy to answer whatever questions you might have about it. First of all, there is a number that I have changed since the planning commission made their recommendation. When we presented it to the planning commission, it was with a standard that the average home size in a mixed-use zone development be nine hundred and sixty square feet. That's carryover from our residential four zone, which is part of the genesis of the mixed-use zone. The mixed-use zone is sort of a hybrid between our urban village commercial zone, which is in the books, on the books today. That's a zone that also allows for both residential and non-residential uses. And our R four zone, which is our effort as staff to come up with a zoning mechanism to allow for what we're seeing here to be approved. That nine sixty went down to nine hundred. Having not caught that earlier is my mistake. The applicant has represented consistently that the homes in this project, like what they've built elsewhere, would be just over, or just, just under nine hundred square feet. Two-bedroom, one bath. Pretty similar throughout the whole project, so unlike what you saw earlier. Not a mixture of studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, but two-bedroom. two-bedroom units, but two bedrooms, one bath. So that's why that number's been changed. Planning Commission didn't discuss that a lot, so I'm hoping that I don't take a beating from them when when we discuss that in the future. There's that. The other more important thing, this has been a big deal for staff. I think it's a big deal for the planning commission. They discuss this quite a bit, and I think it's something that when the applicant is here, maybe it needs to be discussed between you and the applicant, but this may go to some degree to what Councilman Marshall brought up a moment ago. And it's not just in Spanish Fork where this has been an issue, where with a mixed-use project, cities want non-residential uses. You can put residential uses just about anywhere, and they work in the marketplace. People rent them, people buy them. It can work at a lot of locations. This is a very unique location by way of potentially being able to support non-residential stuff. So making sure that there is some non-residential construction happening throughout the life of the project, that typically is important to communities as staff. That's certainly important to us here. So right now, the proposed mixed-use zoning language would require that 30% of the square footage in the project through every phase of the project be non-residential. That is to say that, for example, if the applicant were to build one 10,000-square-foot strip retail building here as part of their first phase, then they could do 30,000 square feet or so of the residential space. Does that make sense in terms of kind of that ratio? And if they get to a point to where they they can't or choose not to proceed forward with additional non-residential development beyond that, then per the provisions of the proposed mixed-use zone, they're not eligible to have that next phase of residential development approved. The applicant has some concerns with that. I won't, I won't try to speak for him tonight. I think that's something that when he's here, might be a better, better time to talk that through. But I will say that that that's been a big deal for staff. I think it still is something, just maybe the one thing that's worth noting tonight about the the mixed-use zoning language, so.
Did you say at the first year conversation, they want this tabled? Is that what you said?
The applicant can't be here tonight. We just got notice late this afternoon to that effect, and he requested that it be continued. So yes.
The conversation?
Yes, yeah.
So the thought there is that unless you guys see it differently, there's the public here still scheduled for a public hearing. So I'd like to open it up for public hearing, still under the notion that the applicant would like this continued. So maybe some of the questions we need to answer is going to happen at another future meeting, but we still want the public to be able to get on the record and discuss this and ask their questions, make their feelings known. I like your concern with that.
No.
I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing, then we can go back to Dave with any questions we have.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Euler to go into public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for this item. Anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak to this?
Edison Hill. I actually live just north of that area. I've got a little bit of anxiety and a little bit of excitement about the project. I would love to see some commercial in that area. I'd love to see it as a urban commercial, bakeries, little bistros, something. I don't want to see AT&T there. I don't know if that can be, I I understand that you have a, the US City Council have little to actually put what you can put in that area, but still a lot of angst in that because if I have a lot of useless commercial for me, and I would love to be able to walk to that grocery store when my wife says, I need a gallon of milk or a dozen eggs. So I'm hoping that happens as well. I'm not, I'm not encouraged, but because they haven't been able to get anything there to this point with it being zoned C2. So they haven't had any commercial really willing to get into that area. Also, there's 100 units there, two bedrooms. I know they've got a lot of strict guidelines for that, which I'm super excited about, but that puts up anywhere from 100 to 200 extra cars in that area. Just south of that area is Maple Mountain High School. You've got a proposed roundabout. I did go to the planning commission as well. You've got a proposed roundabout right where that little four-square is. And so there's going to be a lot of traffic in that area in the mornings because you've already backed up past the tracks with all the school traffic coming in in the morning, put in an extra 200 cars in that. There's some concern with that, even though it's going to be a roundabout. And I know that they've done a lot of studies with that, and I appreciate that. However, what looks good on paper may not look so good when you have 16- and 17-year-old drivers there that don't know how to navigate or are rookies at navigating roundabouts. There are more stops. Having six daughters and already put them all through cars, I know that they'll drive five miles to not go on the freeway or go to a roundabout. So and again, it's already been brought up. How many residentials can be built as opposed to? And I've got a question for Dave real quick. When you say that, put the 10,000, 30,000, what what does 30,000 look like building-wise for them when they put that? How many buildings is that? So when you get a second to answer that, that way I can understand, because I'm really nervous that we're going to have residential and no commercial, because people are not going to bring in their commercial businesses into that. That makes me nervous because it already hasn't succeeded at commercial yet. And there's a lot of residential area already around that. And then, yep, that's what I, that's one of my questions. So I'd love to, and I'd love to, actually, if you could keep the residential similar to the Salisbury Town Homes, if that was the recommendation, I'd rather, I'd rather see that to be follow that same pattern of having townhomes as opposed to the stacks on stacks, I think it was. I liked that. Stacks of people stacked on each other. I liked that. But I think the townhomes would actually be very consistent in that area, and to keep along that model would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Edison. Anyone else?
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
Can I give a different name for the record?
No, no, it's got to be sent. We got to know.
I'm still Andrew Kelly. So, yeah, I, 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 I agree. I'd love to go to a nice meal there and stop spending all my date nights in Provo. That'd be awesome. By Utah standards, this is, you know, it's okay. It's fine. If I was king, I would have a central square with a fountain and a gathering spot. So this is going to get approved as it is, and it's not going to be bad. I've already said my piece, as long as it's not a gas station and a car wash. Every, everything, everything beyond that is only up and up, you know? But I would, I would just offer that if not this, and I know this developer's gone through the wars with this, you know, getting it to this stage, and I appreciate that. And the landowner, he has rights, and I appreciate that as well. But can you give thought, Mayor, you're our king, all right? You know, you.
No, he's mayor.
He is mayor. I know we've changed the terms over the years. If he was in my country, he'd be Lord Mayor, okay?
Oh, Lord Mayor.
So, yeah. And he made a royal decree at the beginning of the year that we're getting a leisure center, right? I suppose. So sometimes we need a king, all right? And that's who I voted for. And your, your voice is strong in this. Can, with your colleagues, I see some concerning things tonight, you know? And I, I am all for diverse opinions. I think that's what makes our city great, and I see it lacking a lot, unfortunately. You know, that, speaking of that, that young lady, Stacy, seriously, that young lady that's the nurse that like running the hospital over here, the mental health, why on earth is she not on the council? I can't remember her name, but if she's watching this, please run. You'll have my vote. But can we, we don't have, when, when I moved, when I moved here, I've already said it many, many times over all the years, SFCM was one of the, you know, that's a jewel. It was one of the reasons I moved here. Also, I looked at an online thing of Woodbury in their marketing of Canyon Creek. It says walkable, all these wonderful things, right? I was like, that's so awesome. It's not what we have. It's not bad. Again, by Utah standards, it's.
It's not Avalon.
It's not Avalon. Thank you.
Wasn't it?
It's not Avalon. I moved, I moved from that city, and that city was less developed than Alpharetta when I moved here. And they, the reason I bring up the king is Avalon and what they, if you, if you bring up downtown Alpharetta now, it was much more dilapidated than what we have. That's why I talk about our main street. The potential's unbelievable. Three times the size of what we had there. They had a king on the planning department that worked for 25 years to get that. And they spent $100 million on the downtown. Avalon was a lot more than that. But there's gathering spots. Mayor, we've got all these wonderful trails. Where are they leading to? Let's get some gathering spots. We don't have, other than Main Street, do we have any walkable developments anywhere in the city? What am I missing? Anywhere? Or gathering spots other than this beautiful park right here and now this? So it can't be all on your shoulders. I've heard tonight that you're really good at denying stuff, but give them opinions on direction, on this is what we, maybe I'm wrong. We can't have open space. We can't like tell people you can't sell your land. That's not cool. You know, we all want open space, but can the city, do they have bottomless, do you have bottomless pit that you can buy up all the land, Mayor, and never have anything blocking our river trail? You know, let's, let's, let's do something a little different, little, little, yeah. That's what, yeah, that's what Canyon Creek should be. Would you go to the Avalon if that was here?
Yeah, it looks awesome.
And we've got the same economic base, same type of people. I moved here. I moved to the exact same city that I moved from, in my opinion. It's a wonderful place to live. And I know I'm asking for a lot. I kind of categorize cities. I know there's all these world cities rankings, and I categorize cities very simply. Is it a great place to live? Is it a great place to visit, a destination? And the holy grail is both of them. I think we've got the great place to live down. Let's work on the other parts.
Thank you, Andrew.
Hey, Andrew.
Yeah.
I think your car was dirty when I drove by the house the other day. You should hit the car wash.
Anyone else?
I'm in trouble finding them, Chad.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Argyle. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're out of public hearing on this item, and appreciate the public, the public comment there. I guess the only question that I had written down, and this isn't, I asked this because I'm not going to ask the applicant of it, but timeline, again, of we're putting more people and hopefully development on a corner of Fourth North and Canyon Creek Parkway. Everybody's waiting. How soon do we get over the, over the railroad and down towards the freeway?
It's a, it's a real concern if it's backing up all the way past the railroad tracks. That is a UDOT road. We can reach out to them. I don't, I don't know of any immediate plans.
Not those railroad tracks. I mean Canyon Creek Parkway across the railroad tracks further.
Spanish Fork.
Spanish Fork Parkway.
Oh, that's supposed to start.
Oh, geez, Spanish Fork Parkway.
Spanish Fork Parkway, that's supposed to start here in the next month and be done by the end of summer.
The rail, just like the railroad was there. I don't know what they were doing, but they, there was a whole crew of them there.
They've started, from what I've seen online, they've started their second line or the, the crossing next to it. So they're, they're working on it.
Yeah, they, they said that the materials and, and they're getting going now. And, and UDOT actually has a project on Highway 51 that they delayed so that we can get this done first, and then they can finish that project. So, sorry about that.
Couple of months. Thank you. Any other questions for staff before we?
I have a couple for staff.
Okay.
I just FaceTimed myself.
Ask yourself.
That guy did not know. How many units is there? I can't, it's, when I zoom into these.
108. I believe it's 108, yeah.
101, eight?
108.
And there's a open space requirement for mixed use. How do you judge open space in, like, the parking lot certainly is an open space, right?
Yes.
No, it's not. How do you, like, what is the 25% open space for here?
It would be, it would be this. It'd be landscaping around the buildings. Any improved impermeable surface. I don't like calling it open space when we're talking about projects like this. It's really landscaping is what it is. We do require, like Commissioner Carden asked about the previous project and whether it provided the amenities that are required for the R4 zone. The same kind of concept would come to play with this, where there are certain amenities required based on the number of homes in a project on a scale.
I thought I saw a 25% open space number today. Miss?
Yes, I can't remember if we, and I'll certainly look, if we, if we call it open space or we just call it landscaping, either way, we.
That's three acres.
We've regulated it the same.
Because it's definitely not that, is it?
It's three acres.
Where's three acres of?
It's, it's everything that you see here.
It's all the green trees where you're not, where you're not parking.
Yeah, those, those islands, those would, would.
All right, that, that's how you're calculating it. I guess that's the question.
So again, really landscaping.
Why am I pissed? Whoops, sorry. I'm, I'm, I don't mean to sound like that.
Surely got nothing.
Did it just, no one's watching at this point. I apologize for.
It's getting late, so now the language will change.
No, it will not change. I'm just, it, I'm curious. It just, it seems inconsistent with the ordinance, but I'm sure you've done the math.
We have, and the applicant, the applicant's engineer, their architect, they've vetted the mixed-use zone language that's proposed to, to make sure that what you're seeing tonight is consistent with that. The one thing that I caught late, like I said, is that average unit size, but.
Are you, are you, I'm trying to read your tone.
I know. I don't need to. It's been a long night.
I'm, I'm wondering, though, are you wanting to see the, the open space more together? So it's more functional and usable or, yeah, so you have some larger gathering space? I know that's something that's been, that was heavily discussed at the DRC level. I can't speak for the, the planning commission. Dave, Dave maybe can, but, but that's something that's been discussed in terms of the usability of the acreage, and, and are these residents going to have spaces where they can be?
I mean, it's, it's top property. There's a railroad track behind, a sea of parking in front of you. What do you, where's your green space? That tree, that park strip along Fourth. I don't know that I want people in it.
Zigzagging trees?
Hmm?
Zigzagging the trees?
Yeah.
Well, there's a sidewalk there, but.
I would agree. The sea of parking, that's a good description.
What about, there's a parking requirement. I'm assuming 2.5 again?
Correct.
So that's what, 270 stalls. Where are those? Are those across these, right?
In this.
What's that?
Some of that is shared.
Oh, okay.
With the, with the businesses.
Gotcha.
Dave, one question I have. Some of the pictures show this, and wait, this will work, this road be on the, on the backside here, and some don't.
Railroad right-of-way, sorry. Yeah, that, that might just be.
Okay. I was wondering where that road came from, the Y behind it, so.
No, I believe this, this abuts the railroad right-of-way, so, and they might have a little, in fact, I think there is a maintenance road that they have as part of that right-of-way today, but not, not like a public street or anything like that. At least that's not part of what's proposed here. Or do I think there's room for that?
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, he's requested to table it so he can.
Mayor, can I elaborate just briefly on the parking?
Yes.
If, if this is a concern at all, it's a good time for us to, to retool. But like I mentioned earlier, and like Councilman Marshall mentioned, 2.5 parking spaces for each of the units, residential units was required. For the non-residential side of things, that would just be our typical parking requirements based on use, whether it's office, restaurant, grocery store, or anything like that. For the non-residential side of things, that would just be our typical parking requirements based on use, whether it's office, restaurant, grocery store, or anything like that. We'd still require enclosed garages for 60% of the units, as is the case with the R4 zone. One of the things that we as staff have asked is that the applicant not put those garages front and center. So to try to come up with places, discreet places to locate those garages instead of, for example, around the park. And that indeed is one of the red lines that we've discussed with them that they're working on. But as proposed, the mixed-use zone reads this way. Parking provided to satisfy the requirement for non-residential uses, that's the commercial stuff, may be counted to provide up to 30% of the required parking for residential uses following that the fault, excuse me, provided that the following provisions are met. That a perpetual parking slash cross-access easement is granted for the shared parking. And that clearly identified well-lit and otherwise safe pedestrian connections are provided throughout the parking area. So that's, as I mentioned earlier, pretty common when you're talking about this kind of mixed-use arrangement. But that, that's part of the proposal.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions? You want to ask staff about this before asking the applicant a couple of weeks? If not, I'd entertain a motion to table item C.
I move to table, or continue, item C.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. Roll call vote, Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Okay, item 8C's continued to our next meeting, takes us to item 8D. Mixed-use zone ordinance to amend Title 15 by creating a mixed-use zoning district that will allow for developments to include residential and non-residential uses.
Do we want to table this too?
I think that's most appropriate.
Okay, so this, this directly relates to changing Title 15 so a development like this can happen. I would entertain a motion, if there's no questions on this, to table this item as well.
Before we do, can I, so I was reading through it, and I had a question about some of the wording that maybe we would want to adjust before we actually...
We've got the agenda and we're, it's 10:30. We might as well make it till midnight, so. We can go check the river after that. Nobody has to go to bed. No, but I think it, it's probably appropriate. If you're going to have questions in two weeks, we, we, if we don't know what they are, we can't study them, so if you've got questions now, I think it'd be great to take them. We'll let Dave stay there.
The only question I've got is in, I had in number two, letter C, it's talking about maximum height of the, of the roofs being 50 feet. But then in section two below that, it says where projects abut property that is zoned R1 or R3, the maximum height shall be 40 feet within 50 feet of the property line, basically. So basically, you're not wanting a 50-foot building within, what is it, 50 feet of the property line, right?
Fifty feet.
It's got to go to 40 feet.
Correct.
My question is, what happens, it, it's only stating that for R1 or R3. What if, what if you've got an RR zone that it abuts, that we then convert eventually to an R1 or an R3, but we've already allowed it to reach that 50 feet because it wasn't outlined here? So that's my only question. My only thoughts on that is, do we, do we only want R1 and R3?
Your call. Hey, that's, I see what you're saying. So you're saying on properties that we would anticipate having zoned R1, the same consideration should be given?
Yeah, if that's the purpose is to prevent having a 50-foot roof next to a R1 or an R3, and our holding zone is RR, which eventually will likely be an R1 or an R3, then don't we want to protect that as well? So, only thoughts that I had as I was reading that.
Are you comfortable with us taking that as homework?
Yeah.
I think there might be public that would like to speak to this, to this on the public hearing agenda, or part, a section of our agenda. So I think we should entertain a motion to go into public hearing if the public has anything that staff can look at over the next couple of weeks as well. I think that's good practice. I'd be here for that.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Carden to go into public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item 8D. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this?
Ed Asil again, and really thank you very much for this evening. It's been very enlightening. And I'm grateful for what you do as council members and mayor and staff. So thank you for taking your time out of your day and your family's lives, so I appreciate that. One of, it's kind of fortuitous that we didn't have this and, or didn't have to vote on the last motion. But I would love to see with, because we're setting precedent here, which is really exciting for our city, because this is new with the mixed use. I would love to hopefully take consideration that we have a planned-type community when we use the mixed use. And we're perfectly for this, for this project, where we have a design where they brought in residential, but they also bring in, I've already got six people who are already lined up for the commercial piece of it as well. So they could actually have that planned ahead of time. I'm not sure if that's a possibility or if that's anything we can look into to put that into this mixed-use opportunity. Because that way, we know as residents that they're going to have, you know, 60% of this already filled up with commercial, and they can continue and don't have to worry about the 30% guideline. So I'd love to have it be more planned as they get the whole plot of land or whole area in that mixed use. So that may be one way to make sure that the builder of the properties has a good enough plan for the residential and for the commercial being implemented. So that would be my ask.
Thank you, Ed Asil. Anyone else for this item?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Argyle. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're out of public hearing.
One comment. Is it Scott Anderson?
Corey.
Corey. He mentioned that this is going to work for me here. When he was communicating to us. There we go. That he, oh shoot, you touched him. This building right here, that he already had some people that were wanting this. Especially because this was, it's the urban village as well, and businesses in the bottom, and they want to live in the top.
He's looking to keep, I, I actually spoke with him as well.
Okay.
He's looking to keep that piece of property for himself, and that's why it's, that's why he's already got it ready to go. Because he's looking to keep that building and that section of it, because he's going to own that.
For his wife's furniture store.
Is that what it's for?
Probably.
Oh, I didn't know that was the case.
Yeah, he just mentioned that he did, so I didn't know that.
But he did, he did mention that he had one of them already prepped. But I'd love to see, you know, a plan for at, at least a good portion of it. We've already got FIZZ coming in, we've got...
Travis is pointing to the mic, Ed Asil.
What's that?
Travis is pointing to the mic.
Yeah.
He wants you to come up to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
And say what you were saying.
Sorry. So, yeah, I would like for, that way they've got a good percentage of it already planned out. They've got a FIZZ already hooked in, they've got a bistro or a bakery or whatever it may be, grocery store already prepped and ready to go, knowing that they've already got that contracted and then they can build that in. And it's really a planned community as opposed to, I hope we get some commercial in here, which I feel that's where we're at right now. We've got, it sounds like we're going to have a furniture store, but we don't have anything else. And I've got Walmart six minutes down the road, just going to say, I only need to walk through milk and egg for my wife.
Anything else? Discussion on this?
Motion to table?
I'd entertain a motion to table, which Councilman Argyle has done. Is there a second?
Second.
Most, uh, seconded by Councilman Euler. This is a roll call vote to table item D. Uh, Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Item D is tabled. Okay, 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 takes us to 9A, resolution of the mayor extending the emergency proclamation regarding flooding. Unless you've been under a rock, we, we did, uh, declare a proclamation, and Mr. Vaughn Pecail will tell us about that.
Well, Mayor, it's your proclamation, but as you declared it, the, the state statute allows it to last for a maximum of 30 days. If the emergency conditions are still existing, the, the same statute allows the city council to extend it by a resolution. To do that, you adopt the resolution, you specify the date that it should expire. Now, it's hard to predict the future and understand how long this emergency condition will, will last, but we have smart people working on this, as you could see earlier tonight, and we have a pretty good idea. But that's one of the things you'll need to do, is fill in a date for that expiration if you decide to extend the proclamation.
Mayor, we think that as long as emergency conditions exist, such as there are sandbags out, we want, we think it'd be good for the, the emergency circumstance to, to exist. If we push this to the council meeting, there's really no harm in having it, you know, for six months. But if we, if we set it for, say, June 21st, which is a Wednesday after our second council meeting in June, if for some reason it needs to continue at that meeting in June, we could extend it to a different date, right, Vaughn?
Yeah.
But that would give us the ability to more than likely get through everything that we need, get all the sandbags removed and kind of get the community that is, the spaces that are disrupted, if you will, by the sandbags and other things associated with this. That would give us the time needed to get everything cleaned up and, and a little bit of room to spare. So I think we, as we were talking, we suggested maybe that Wednesday, June 21st. And then if we're off, we can, in the meeting in June 20, we can, we could punt it again, to use a technical term.
I will say that the proclamation kind of speaks for itself of what it, what's in it and the reason behind it. But the practical application of it, Seth can kind of back me up on this, that, that, it was timely. I think that the day that we did it, we were at some properties with that proclamation, with business cards, saying we've got to get in here and get some mitigation done. And thankfully, it was done because we're touching sandbags in those places.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the sandbag places we, we were showing and, and they, they had, they had a lot of things in the space where the sandbags are. And it's possible that part of the property's been eroded, because it's, it's got a lot of water that's taken on that, that specific bend, so.
Any other highlights you want to hit of why the proclamation?
No, I think you did great.
Oh, okay. What else were you saying?
I, well, one thing that we talked about as staff, it, and we don't think that you can do this right now, and, and I'm not sure that we want to. But we want to at least put that out there if you want us to. And, and that is the, to say it's illegal for somebody to get in the river. There's good question in the legal circles, so Vaughn has been asking some of his, um, his amigos in different cities, what they think about us possibly outlawing getting in the river. If we're going to do that, we had wondered, can we do this by resolution, by the, sorry, by this emergency proclamation? There's decent, uh, legal argument that says we can. The best way would be probably by some kind of ordinance. But I think maybe just for a moment, I'd love some feedback from you. Is, is that something you would like to give the police? That, certainly the, the threat of, of law, the reality of law, that, hey, get out of the river. The conscious, the contrary side to this is there's, there's an interest in the public that, that they have a right to the waterways. So that, that's the other side of it, but really it's been our message, as we've stated a lot lately, stay out of the river. Any thoughts from you in terms of potentially adding teeth to that? I use maybe a prejudicial term here, criminalizing getting into the river? It's not a part of this today. We could maybe add it right now, but I think Vaughn's comments would, he would say, if we're going to really do it, then we'd need to have some kind of an ordinance in this world.
Yeah, exactly. That was kind of the consensus of my colleagues. And another concern is like Seth mentioned, there is the, the state constitution provides that it's the waters of the state and that the public have access to those waters, including the ground beneath them, the streetbed access, basically. So there are concerns about doing it, but I think, as Seth mentioned, the statute does seem to give pretty good, broad authority to restrict access to a disaster area.
Can I ask a question? Is there anything in ordinance that says if resources are required, like we had a week ago, that those responsible pay for the cost of, of using those resources?
Chief, you want to speak to that?
My understanding is in the state statute, if there is search and rescue operations implemented, that, that there are reimbursable costs towards the entity that does that for the individual that they're rescuing from the river or searching for, so.
And maybe that's something we need to communicate to the public, that you could be, if, if your kids are being irresponsible, which kids are, right? Not all parents can control that at all times, but at least that's one more thing that we can use to, to help parents try and talk to their kids about staying away from the water.
Any concern about undue pressure on your department, your agency? You know, you guys are up and down the river quite a bit right now and probably continue, will, will be, but you got Highway 6 you contend with. You got everything else you can contend with as well, keeping us safe. What's your, your feelings on that, Chief?
I don't see any, Vaughn and I had a discussion the other day, and he brought up a lot with the rights that people have in waterways. And we definitely could put an ordinance in effect with that and hopefully curtail some dangerous actions by people entering the river, so.
Have we, Chief, have, have we had anybody pushed back if they've been asked by any of your people or Dale?
No.
Dale, have you had any, anybody, if you say, hey, get out of the river, hey, kid, hey, you, whatever? Have we had that? Have we even had that dialogue with somebody?
We've had a few kids playing close to the river that we've asked just to, to get away, and they have, and we, we haven't had any pushback from anyone.
Okay, and Dale, similar experience on your end, or do you know of any reports of actual contact with people? I, I know there's people that get in the river. We've had a few of those circumstances that we've, we've been aware of, but where you've said, hey, get out of the river, and has anybody pushed back, or they, have they responded?
Yeah, they've seen, they've seen some, but I don't know that they've had any interaction with them.
Okay. We're, we're not trying, I'm not trying to cause you to do something or feel uncomfortable about something. I think we're just looking for, is, is there any interest, knowing to maybe Councilman Euler's comments, knowing that the, the response that, that is mounted when somebody gets into the river, tips over and, and requires some kind of a swift water rescue, it gets pretty, pretty expansive and expensive.
Are we, are we open at the reservoir, Dale?
We're, reservoir's open.
I guess that's, just, just internally, my thoughts about that, because kind of my own life, it feels like, I mean, and again, especially in the next couple of weeks, we're going to invite, without a pool here locally, that we, that we don't have. It's a lot of kids going to be up there, and you guys are up there quite a bit. When kids start going up there, and they're up there with things they can float on in that water, and it just seems like that's a, that's a high time where, hey, on our way back to wherever we live, you know, we're hopping in the river too, which usually is pretty inconsequential. But really, for another, probably two months, it's not, and so, you know, it almost seems like a good, a good reason to add it in ordinance to an emergency declaration to warn, like, hey, you know, you're up there where people are, and, you know, you get in trouble up the reservoir, you know, we don't have a lifeguard up there, but we have people, you know, there's people there with you hopefully to, to help out. There's not in the river. You have to deploy assets and resources, and so, don't, don't take that kayak, don't take that blow-up floaty. Don't take anything and think it's, think it's going to end well in the river. So, so maybe some, I don't know, I guess I'm not, I'm always worried about heavy-handed government, but I... So, so maybe some, I don't know, I guess I'm not, I'm always worried about heavy-handed government, but I, I feel like our only tragedy that could come from how well we're prepared for, for this flood, is that an accident happened in the river.
So we're talking about corresponding this with the emergency declaration, right? So this ordinance would be kind of hand in hand?
Not necessarily. You could extend the emergency declaration tonight, and then if, if you wanted to, uh, adopt that ordinance, we'd have to do notice and bring back an ordinance.
I guess maybe better asking the question is, so the ordinance that we'd be putting in place with being in the river would be when there's an emergency declaration in place?
Right, yes. So I've already written this ordinance, and it says it's illegal to access the river while there is an emergency declaration regarding the river. Not just any emergency declaration.
That already exists?
No, I've, I've drafted it in anticipation you might want it, so.
Okay.
And Vaughn, maybe marrying some of what Councilman Carden just said. Could we, if there's interest, could you put it in the resolution and then put it in an ordinance? And so maybe have some effect of, the, the effect of, I've got the, the, uh, authority of an emergency declaration to keep you out of an unsafe.
Yeah.
Emergency area. We're gonna do that, but then we're gonna couple it with an ordinance in two weeks after the proper notice?
Yes, and, and the statute authorizing local declarations, um, it clearly says you can order and regulate access to disaster areas. And so we can add that right into the resolution, saying it's unlawful to access the river, okay? And then we can come back with an ordinance that police could actually cite somebody with. I drafted it, so it would be a new section of our code, so they could cite to that.
Only when it's an emergency.
Only during a local emergency or state emergency regarding the Smashford River. I'm not sure it's a deterrent, right, but it does give, I think, Chief's group the, hey, get out of the river, and I mean get out of the river. Handsome, don't worry, get back that out.
Yeah, he hasn't seen that yet, but I think he's, I, I, I think we're about to see it.
Good.
I think we're just about to see it, because there's just gonna be that many more youth around it, because they're already going up to where they're gonna go. Or coming down from where they're gonna go, and so it's gonna be, why do I have to, why, I don't do that, I'm not on anybody's property. No, you have to, because it's an emergency declaration, we don't want your parents to pay a fine, you know, I don't know.
One, one significant weakness is this only exists in our city's limits.
Oh, so that section in the river bottoms?
Yeah, and so, you know, that, that mile or so around the golf course, and then that mile, mile and a half. So it's a little less.
You just put an officer.
At the city limit.
Handing out tickets, yeah, as they, as they come by.
Yeah.
That, that is a weakness to, to it, right, it doesn't, it doesn't cover the whole expanse of that river.
Just the city.
Sounds like the county means something.
Pardon?
The county, does the county?
Correct.
Does the county, uh?
The county, I don't think it's even declared an emergency, so.
Although they have you there, I think it's been just, uh, local cities who have.
So that would be a limitation, and, and, and you need to understand that.
Yeah, I, I guess that's true, so, so that starts to, that starts to, they don't really go around the golf course too much, they go to, they go to the section of the.
Sports park would be them.
Yeah, so it would be the sports park where, where you, you'd find some, you're gonna find some youth, I think. So it might be effective for the sports park.
Yeah, uh, interestingly, the Poplar Lane Trailhead in that area is outside of the city's limits. So we could, we could close that, we could trespass that kind of a thing, but it, it, you know, in terms of our property, but it, but it wouldn't have the same effect of law.
The typical gathering places with the rope swings are all in the county.
Rope swings are no longer there, but you are right.
They're hard to get to.
They are, yeah, they've been taken.
And those, we have signage up the, of those, those trailheads, right, up at our, I mean, we've got that warning signage.
They're good signs, but they don't say it's unlawful to be on the river.
Yeah.
And I don't know if teenagers would read that saying it's unlawful.
I would have still floated it. It's a good time.
Well, I mean, would it be, would, if, if you added that to that language and added it to our signage that was at the trailhead? Even though it's in the county, it's on city property right there.
Right, right.
You can put that there.
Arguably, you could then, you know, if you have signs warning it to stay out of our property.
Yeah.
Trailhead closed or whatever, um, then you could do a criminal trespass, potentially charged, because they, you posted it.
Yeah, it's tough, because here we are trying to legislate.
I don't think you want to close the whole trailhead, though.
No, no, you don't want to do that, and it's just, it's just, that's the, that's the fear we really have right now.
I would, probably would, would suggest that we not, that we not consider adding it at this time. Uh, I appreciate the discussion, and quite frankly, I think anybody watching this would recognize the sincerity and the desire of, I think, Mayor, you stated it well, that with all the good that we're doing as a community, this would be a tragedy, and so police parents, police kids, listen. And, and the threat of law, I don't know if it's gonna keep anybody out that would go in otherwise. But, uh, so I, we, I think we continue to encourage our river captains, our police officers, our, our fire EMS folks, as they have been stationed in these places to, to keep conversing. More importantly, and I think that this is happening, I think we have some residents that are a little bit more vigilant in saying things, too, and I think that needs to continue.
When does school get out? Next week?
Next week.
Yeah, ten days from now, eight, nine days from now.
Yeah, you almost want the, the thought of maybe not our police force saying it as much as the, as the other residents that'll be on the trail all the time and saying.
Hey, it's against the law, get out. It's against the law, it's against.
The letter you sent, was it read in the schools, or was it just sent to the district?
I don't know that it was read in the schools, it was sent to every junior high and high school parent.
Oh, okay.
Spanish Fork High School, Maple Mountain, uh, Advanced Learning Center, and Salem Hills High School.
I like the letter.
So we're grateful for the school district and being a partner with us.
Did you get any feedback from parents?
I didn't get any, no. Well, I'd say, I, I, I think, uh, we're still gonna have meetings where the river's gonna be pretty high a- after this, so if, if it needs to come up, I think I think we have the opportunity to do it. Um, but I, I think for sure, I would, I would. Yeah, I'd entertain a motion to extend this emergency declaration, I like the idea of, of putting a definitive, you know, twenty-first of June on it, so we can do it after that, that's Amber Mendenhall's birthday, so that should work good.
Motion to extend the emergency declaration till?
June twenty.
June twenty-first.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Marshall, roll call vote, Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Thank you, that passes, stay out of the river. We have closed session?
Yep, I move to adjourn to closed session for land transaction.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Euler, to go into closed session for land transaction, roll call vote, Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
We're adjourned, thank you so much for joining us.